It is now seven P M. I want to welcome everyone to our regular city council meeting. It is Tuesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty one, and we always start our meetings with an invocation, and then we continue it with the pledge of allegiance, and we ask you to join us. We always do our invocation with our mayor pro temp, Sarah Lucido. Ms. Lucido?
Dear God, be with us as we welcome in the summer. For many of us, this is our favorite time of year. Please watch over our families as we enjoy the good times ahead. Bless our residents as they travel. Watch over our city workers and first responders and grant us a peaceful and happy summer. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone that took part, put, joined us in that. Next, we're going to do our roll call. Good evening, Ms. Walton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Curly.
Hi, President East Point.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Here in East Point.
Councilmember Lucido.
Here, East Point.
Councilmember Moore.
Here in East Point.
Mayor Owens.
Here at East Point. Thank you. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Council, would you like to add or subtract?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
There is one item I would like to change, and that's light on item M. I would like to change it to approval of the event application for Juneteenth's event.
Support them.
Okay. Motion is supported. Please call the row.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Now, we're going to open the first hearing of the public. We have two, one in the beginning and one closer to the end. Everyone gets three minutes in the beginning and three minutes at the end. If you didn't get to voice what you said in the beginning, you have an additional three minutes. We ask you to be respectful because all ages, races, and backgrounds are listening, and we just want to uphold ourselves to a certain level as we would in person. So we now open the first hearing of the public. Ms. Walton?
Yes, Mayor. Alyssa Dybolt would like to speak first.
Yes, good evening. Hold on one second. Let me time you. Thank you. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. I am Alyssa Dybolt, and I'm currently serving as the Chair of the City of East Point Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission. I'm here tonight to talk about Pride Month. I'm sitting at the entrance of Spindler Park where A C D C and the Parks Commission have partnered to install the progress pride flag. This flag has really had quite the journey in the two weeks it's been here. First, it was accidentally taken down by a parks contractor who did apologize for those actions. This information sign that describes it has been taken down not once, not twice, but three times. Someone did try to take down about twenty-five percent of the flag. They threw it all in the dumpster, which we rescued it and restored it. And last night, it was spray painted. And today, we're cleaning off the spray paint that vandalized it overnight. Pride Month began in nineteen seventy on the anniversary of an uprising in New York City because of the constant harassment and discrimination facing LGBTQ plus people. Pride Month is about showing our neighbors that we care and we celebrate their authentic self. It's about educating allies to the realities of being considered different. But ultimately, Pride Month is an uprising. I'm here tonight to share that A C D C will continue to restore the information sign. We will continue to clean up the messes left by those trying to vandalize city property, and we will continue to file police reports every single time that something hateful and destructive is done to this project. I sincerely hope that these actions stop because as a community, we need to call out these hateful actions and remember that there are people in East Point seeing this battle happening on this month. And what they need to see is the support and affirmation from the community that they are living in. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, one thing that East Point, we do not tolerate vandalism, and we respect others, whatever choice they make in their life and their backgrounds and experiences. So those that feel a certain way about certain things, we ask you to respect others and their choices because we are a family town here, and as a family, there's always different backgrounds and experiences and different things and cultures, and we're supposed to love people for who they are. So let's work on doing that, and let's start here at East Point. Let's move forward to the next person in the hearing of the public, please.
Mayor Dennis would like to speak next.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Dennis.
How are you guys doing?
Good, thank you.
You guys are introducing an ordinance and first reading tonight about fireworks safety. I would like to see this table to another time. With the timing of Fourth of July coming, I have inspections next week at my tent on Thursday. Adopting this ordinance is one step closer to banning all tents for sales. The economic impact alone from this, I'd like to discuss either tonight or another time if you like. But there's an economic impact when you ban these things, and you're creating a monopoly for other businesses that are in Roseville. So I'd like to work with you guys, sit down, do something, work together, so this doesn't happen to where you guys ban tents. It's not a safety issue whatsoever. So all I have to say is I'd like to work with you guys, go over the economic impact and see this table till after Fourth of July.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Mary Hall Rayford would like to speak next.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening to everyone. I wanted to say that I have a great deal of respect for rules and processes and protocols. And one of the things I've noticed that whenever a protocol, an established method of procedure is ignored or inconsistent, it opens the door for continued inconsistency. Whenever there is an exception, there follows chaos because if a protocol or a policy is given a pass to one, it must be given a pass to all. So I encourage you all to be mindful of the protocols that have already been established for the city and all of its residents so that it doesn't seem to be any special treatment or inconsistency for anyone. This way, we can keep the peace and the harmony when there is unity in this community, and the rules mean the same thing for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Walton?
Um, let me see. There are no hands raised, Mayor, and there's nothing in the chat.
Okay, and those that wasn't able to speak in the first part of the hearing of the public, you have the ability to speak in a second. So thank you all that joined in in the first one. Now, the first hearing of the public is now closed. We're moving right along to approval of the minutes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting for June first, two thousand twenty-one.
Support.
Motion and support. Please call the row.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Next is scheduled hearings. We have the fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two proposed budget public hearing, and that is, we have our city manager. Did you want to open that up? Ms. Dawn, good evening.
Elke is actually in a training this week.
Okay.
So if we can, Randy, I don't know if you want to jump in and...
Sure. The, we have to hold a public hearing on our millage rates every year. If we fail to do so, then we cannot assess the full amount of the millages. This is a public hearing, so anybody in the public can comment on the millages being proposed. But it's not, that's all it is. It's a, it's a opportunity for the public to comment. If we don't do this hearing, it would actually cost the city close to three hundred thousand dollars by the amount of millage we could not assess. So this is a critical item tonight.
Anyone? Thank you. So the hearing for the proposed budget public hearing is not open for any of our residents that want to speak at this time? Do we have anyone that want to speak, Ms. Walton?
Um, I'm clicking through now. I don't see any hand. And there's nothing in the chat, Mayor.
Okay. The scheduled hearing of the public for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two for the proposed budget public hearing is closed. So do we have to adopt anything, or we can move right along? Mr. Albright?
Madam Mayor, thank you. The council can move right along at this point.
Okay, thank you. I just make sure. Say thank you for that.
You're welcome.
The next item is unfinished business is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-one dash one-two-one-zero for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two for appropriations and tax levies. Council, any discussion on this? If not, we can move forward.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we would give a second reading to and adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve-ten, which provides for the appropriations and tax levies establishes the water consumption rates and establishes the sewer services for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two.
Support. Motion and support. Please call the row.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
We have reports from our administration. Our city manager is now on a training leave. So we have our assistant city manager, Ms. Walton. Do you have any updates for us?
Just a quick update, Mayor. Many of our departments have been working hard to prepare for the Grashit cruise. So we'd like to send a big thank you to all of those that are working and continue to work actually through the weekend. We're very appreciative of that. And then our D P W worker or D P W director has been working with the community relations team at G F L regarding the recycling bins with the trash and recycling going out. We've had some issues with some contamination in the trash and the recycling. So we're going to do some community engagement, send out some information of what can be recycled, what can't be recycled. So we'll work with the community so that we can get that straightened out with G F L.
Council, any questions for our assistant city manager, Ms. Walton, at this time?
Sure, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, I had a quick question. What's an update on the medical marijuana facilities application?
Um, I believe Mr. Albright's been working on that. Did you want to give an update, Mr. Albright?
I mean to ask.
Did you want to give an update when it's your turn, Mr. Albright? You want to wait, Mr. DeMonaco, so we can get?
Sure. Either way, it's fine with me.
Okay, so we'll, we'll come back to you so we can address everything that Ms. Walton can give us so we can move it smoothly.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I just had one other comment, too.
Okay.
Um, I just, I guess more of a comment about code enforcement items. If we could just follow up with people, I think generally, I think we've been getting recently like a lot more residents reaching out to us, and I think it's mainly just keeping in touch with them, I think, is a lot of the issue, too. So if we can just work on that, just getting in contact with residents more often, just providing a status update if it's, you know, been a while, I think that'll make it smoother for everybody.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else for our city manager, assistant city manager, Ms. Walton? Now, we have our Director of Public Safety. I don't, did you want to give us an update? Good evening, Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The only thing I have is we're having our Neighborhood Watch Meeting tomorrow at six P M. At Memorial Park in the Pavilion. We will have our police code enforcement officer there, our animal control officer, and I also have a representative from Families Against Narcotics. He's going to talk about a new program that they have. So a lot of interesting stuff, not just Neighborhood Watch stuff, but public safety in general. So hope to see people there tomorrow.
Thank you. Any questions for our Director of Public Safety at this time? Director, you do deal with code enforcement as well, correct?
We just deal with abandoned vehicles.
Okay.
Parking issues and littering, those three things mainly, inoperable vehicles. We have nothing to do with grass or tall grass weeds, anything like that, so.
Okay, just those little things, okay.
Yep.
So now we were talking about code enforcement. I want to just get that in there if we had to. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And next, we have our Finance Director, Mr. Blong. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I actually have nothing special to report tonight, but if you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions, Council? Okay, saying none. Moving forward. Moving forward to our City Attorney, Mr. Albright. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of Council. Relatively short report section this evening. I am still awaiting the transcripts from the show cause hearings that were conducted at the last council meeting. I anticipate receiving those transcripts, so hopefully by the end of this week. Once I do get those, I will forward a copy to both city administration and also a copy to each of the interested parties. And I will also post a copy of the transcript at, along with a cover letter, at each of the respective properties. As I referenced in our last monthly update, our office has filed several nuisance abatement actions in the Macomb County Circuit Court. Last count, I think there was in excess of ten different case filings. The reason for those, those were requested by city administration. They're primarily targeted at landlords who own rental properties who are either not complying with the city's rental inspection ordinance or otherwise not keeping up their properties. And these are done as a, as a last resort when the landlords are failing to respond to reasonable requests by city administration and also failing to respond over in the district court. And so that is the status. We are in the process of having each of those lawsuits served on the defendants, and I anticipate we should start getting compliance here within the next couple of months. And then finally, an address to the medical marijuana application. I know that Ms. Holman is a participant at this evening's meeting. I know that she sent an email to the city planner this morning. The city administration is just wrapping up in the, the maps. So I think that city administration is very close with having a final version of the application ready to go and to be distributed to the public.
Thank you. I think Councilman DeMonaco had a question about the marijuana. Were you about to go there?
Um, I think, I think that answered my question. I was just kind of curious to make sure we were about to release it.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions that any members of council have.
Okay. Any other questions, Council? Or City Attorney? Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Moving right along to new business. Item A, approval for right-of-way acquisition services for City of East Point Nine Mile Reconstruction on Grashit to West City Limits. Council, any discussion before we move forward to voting?
Um, sure, I guess I could jump in real quick. Madam Mayor, I asked a few questions ahead of the meeting. Asked A E W, and I think I saw the windows jump all over the place. I see Ryan Kearns from A W. Um, I basically was asking because, you know, as you saw, there's seven different properties it mentions, but they're kind of all over the place, and some of the ones next to each other aren't included. And I guess, you know, if Mr. Kern, if you wanted to say anything, too. But I, I was just basically asking why it was those properties, and it essentially sounds like potentially in the past, we maybe did the right-of-way, you know, not consistently, I guess, across time out, at least the west of Grashit area. So that was mainly my questions. And then I think regardless of if, where I was going with that is like if we were going to do a road diet or not on Nine Mile or, or anything that changed possibly where the sidewalk or anything like that was, if we'd still need to do this. And I think to me, after kind of reviewing this, I think it at least looks like either way, we'd want to do this because even if we, say we even did do some sort of road diet, we'd still have a city infrastructure that goes up to these points that they're pointing out in this proposal. So that's really it. Looks like we'll have to spend money to do this and then also to potentially acquire the land from each of these businesses and residents. So I don't know if Mr. Kern, if you had anything else to...
Yeah, I guess just to add to that briefly, as far as the mention of there's only seven locations that we need right-of-way for, and they're sporadic throughout the, from the West City Limits over to Grashit. Yeah, it's some, it appears that originally there was thirty-three to forty-three feet of right-of-way measured from the center line. And that over time, several of the properties, there have been easements or additional right-of-way granted up to twenty-seven feet in some cases where there's sixty feet of right-of-way. That didn't happen based on title searches that we've done recently. That didn't happen at every property along the way. So there's still some properties where there's only thirty-three or forty-three feet of right-of-way, and that right-of-way line falls either within the sidewalk or just in front of the sidewalk. So in some cases, the existing public sidewalk along Nine Mile is not necessarily within the right-of-way. Typically, we see right-of-way at least one feet behind the sidewalk. So again, even if we were to do a road diet or reconstruct the road similar to what it is today, if in the future the city's looking to do any enhancements, streetscape landscaping, you know, that we would have that right-of-way already in place. There's also several utilities within that right-of-way as well. We're looking to replace the water main as part of the reconstruction project, and we would want to put that water main within the green belt as much as possible away from the influence of the road. And consumers' energy is also looking at replacing two high-pressure gas mains as well through there. There's a lot of other utilities, fiber optic, A T and T. So I think it's necessary that we move forward with obtaining these, this right-of-way so that it's consistent throughout that corridor.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ryan, I would have a question. I'm looking at your report, and of course, we can see the address, and we even have the names of the people who live there. Have they been notified by an official letter from your company? What we plan to do, or they look at this thing tonight and be surprised that their name and address is being talked about?
Yeah, we have not notified any of those properties yet. We would start notifying those immediately upon approval of this.
Okay, so if we approve this tonight, these folks will be, got an official letter from the administration or from your company?
Correct.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could, a couple of questions, looking a little forward ahead of this even. Let's just, at this moment, say that we are going to approve this. And you mentioned like utility lines. Are we able to? And I, you know, of course, you know, council, it would need to agree to whatever we're doing. Would we be able to bury some lines then? You know, we have a lot, you know, I'm sure you've seen very well now that there's a lot of lines above ground, and you mentioned the gas line, too. Would we be able to bury lines then? Would that be easy since we'll be taking up the whole property and working on it? And what was the other point of my question here? I guess answer that question first and then my other one.
There's obviously the possibility to bury, bury overhead lines. It's very costly, though. I know Kim Holman's been working with D T Energy recently, trying to get some estimate as well, as far as what it would take both for replacing streetlights and having decorative streetlights along the corridor as well as burying primary and secondary lines. It, right now, I think D T's telling us that it would cost around a hundred thousand dollars per block to bury the primary lines that are along the north side of Nine Mile, and that's just a preliminary estimate that they're providing. So you're looking into the millions of dollars in order to do that. That's just Edison, too. You've also got A T and T, Comcast, Wow, any fiber optic companies that are also on those poles as well. So it is a very costly undertaking to, to bury those lines.
How did this happen? So I know like our last special meeting, we talked about Nine Mile at that special meeting, and I think we even maybe went over some of this, maybe at, at part of the social district conversation, too, where we went into Oak Park, Oak Park and Nine Mile. I see there's no lines above ground. You know, they have the decorative streetlights. How are they able to provide electricity and internet and phone without there being any lines on Nine Mile?
In that corridor, I, I don't know specifically whether they are buried there or if everyone's fed from alleys along Nine Mile. I'd have to look at that area further, but they may be fed from overhead wires from the alleys potentially. Why, why primary lines were placed within the Nine Mile right-of-way? You know, I don't know. It's been like that for several years, obviously. So I don't, you know, I don't know how that determination was made. I believe there are, in other areas, there are overhead lines within the alleys as well, too, so. Because I couldn't answer, you know, D T would answer on that, but...
Okay. And then I did remember my second question. When was our follow-up discussion? Because of course, this is one of our, you know, the first things we need to do for Nine Mile. It's on the agenda right here. When can then we discuss at a meeting potential other things like road diets or things like that before we get too far into the process? Is there a point where we're planning on doing that?
Yeah, we're currently in the process of doing a traffic study that we present the results to you. I'm thinking within the next few weeks, we would probably be able to present that to you and then go from there as far as, you know, whether there's the potential of doing a road diet or not or other options that might be out there. And we were able to get quite a bit of traffic data from Macomb County. That's going to speed up the process as far as getting the traffic study done. But once we do get close to getting that traffic study done, we'll let the city know, and then we can plan another meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Okay, let's move right along. Can I get a motion?
Sure. A motion that we secure the services of four D Acquisition and Consulting, L C of nine-two-five-three, Onsted Highway, Onsted, Michigan, four-nine-two-six-five, in accordance with the attached proposal, terms and conditions at an estimated cost of forty-three thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars.
A second. Motion is second. Please call the row.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is item B, twenty twenty asphalt resurfacing program. Any conversation on this, Council? We have our D P W Director on here as well. If you want to do a briefing on what this topic is for our residents. Good evening, Mr. Palucci.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. You know what? This was the, the Mill and Phil project that we had, that Mr. Abraham started. And I think that Mr. Kern did such a great job on the right-of-way that he could probably explain a little more detail of what happened here, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Kern?
Last, late last summer, we started an asphalt resurfacing program. We completed five streets in the city. During the construction, there were several changes that were made based upon the direction of the former director, Public Works. Some of those items involved additional costs to the project. Originally, and as part of the preliminary estimate of the project, we had estimated about twenty to thirty percent of concrete base repairs that needed to be done, which is typical of what we would estimate for an asphalt resurfacing project. We were directed at the time of the bid to reduce that down to ten percent within the bid. Once we started to remove the asphalt and start doing concrete base repairs, we had determined that it was, it was about eighteen percent of concrete base repairs that we ended up having. The first two streets that we did, Roxanna and Holland, were about ten percent concrete base repairs. But then once we got to Stricker Street, we found that there was more, more concrete base repairs that were needed. It was more extensive. In addition, after we had started construction, we were getting ready to pave the first street. Originally, we were calling for a one-and-a-half-inch wearing course of asphalt with a wedging course underneath it. We were then directed to provide a different cross-section, basically providing three inches total of asphalt, which increased the cost of the project. And by doing that, we also had to remove and replace... Three inches total of asphalt, which increased the cost of the project. And by doing that, we also had to remove and replace additional driveway approaches. And uh curb and gutter as well to accommodate for adjustments to the grade. Um so because of that, there was uh additional costs associated with the project and therefore the final cost of the project came at eight hundred fifty-one thousand dollars, which you see in the. Correspondence that's been provided to you tonight. And this would be the final balancing contract mod that you're approving tonight in order to. Issue the final payment and close out the project.
Now you said this is something that um our last director had proposed. And was it, wasn't it turned down? Was this the one that was turned down?
This was last year's project that I know originally it was, I think, brought to council's attention in January of twenty twenty and at the time. Uh we. At the time, the city did not want to move forward with an asphalt resurfacing program, but then later in the year, sometime in May or June of twenty twenty, we then decided. Move forward with a project. I know it was discussed again earlier this year to potentially do asphalt resurfacing program this year. But I, the council had turned that down earlier this year.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Now, even though we turned it down, is it more expensive now? Because I know a lot of things. Due to COVID as far as wood and certain material is more expensive now. So did the price, since we didn't voted. Vote for it last time, did the price go up?
As far as asphalt concrete prices, uh we've had quite a few recent bids and we have not seen the prices of asphalt concrete go up.
Okay.
But you know, in the last few years, we have seen slight increases in asphalt concrete take place. But we're this year, we're seeing the bids on asphalt concrete projects do up the same as what we've seen last.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um I will make a motion if you're ready.
Alrighty, thank you.
I am, I motion to increase the budget for the twenty twenty asphalt resurfacing program by an additional thirty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. And authorize fi- final payment to be made to the contractor Cadillac Ashwald.
Support that. And I I had a comment, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh yeah, this was, this was one, the original project we voted on. It was a three to two vote. I voted against going. With this project just because in general um should be concrete and it did seem like uh our. Last director, uh Mr. Abraham versus AEW's recommendations that it was gonna be over. The uh budget from our city and I figured that at the time and I just want to make sure that we're. Paying our city contractors. So that's uh well certainly be supporting this, didn't support the original project, but want to make sure that we're paying our. And city contractors. So I supported if I didn't say that early. The motion.
So you did support it? Okay, so motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, point of order.
Yes, sir.
I need your help.
Okay.
Well, as as everybody know, I'm pretty dumb when it comes to computers. Something's on my screen. It says, do you want to turn off? Filter key, yes or no? Should I just hit the hit the X on an upper right-hand corner and forget about it?
You can hit the X and you can say continue. I think it says continue.
Okay, I hit the X. I hit the X. So goodbye. I'll see you guys. I don't know what's, thank you, Madam Mayor.
If I don't say, you have to stay counseling.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't know why that start popping up all of a sudden. Didn't do that in the beginning.
I'm glad I'm not the only one.
Yeah, it happens to me too. Um moving right along to item C, the renewal of workers' compensation. Third-party administrative services. Counsel.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the renewal of the workers' compensation third-party administration services with Michigan Municipal League Workers Compensation Fund. At a net cost of a hundred five thousand three hundred forty-four dollars for the period of July one, twenty twenty to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
Support.
A second.
Motion is support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item is the budget amendment. Next item is the budget amendment, BA twenty-one dash zero four, counsel.
Madam Mayor, I would move to uh that the East Point City Council approve budget amendment. BA twenty-one dash zero four as presented.
Support.
Motion is support. No conversation. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item is changes to administrative rules and regulations, counsel, for discussion if not.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion we approve amendments to section five dot oh one, six dot oh two, six dot oh five, seven dot oh two, eight dot oh one. Eight dot oh two, eight dot oh three, and twelve dot oh six. Uh the administrative rules and regulations is attached.
Sorry, a little early there. Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Support or yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item is smart municipal and community credit contract fiscal year twenty twenty-two. I believe we do this every year. Counsel.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the municipal credit and community credit contract for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and authorize the city manager to actually. Execute all documents.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Next item G, the introduction and first reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve thirteen dash. A zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter fifty, zoning article four, administration and enforcement. Section fifty dash fifty-three, temporary uses in article ten. Office and business districts, section fifty dash ninety-one. B one, community business district of the ordinances of the city of East Point. Counsel for discussion if not. Let's move forward.
Wouldn't mind hearing from the uh fire marshal about this one.
Yes.
I'm on score.
Good evening. Fire Marshal. Because I think he's on the other one too. So of the uh fire prevention and protection. Um yes, good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. Oh, Fire Marshal, um, Mr. Marquardt?
Thank you.
I think he might be frozen, Mayor.
Okay. We can't hear you, sir.
Yeah.
Maybe Chief Sage could answer the question.
Oh yeah, Chief Sage, Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, counsel. Uh the uh the first uh uh reading of this uh ordinance. Um I have to be honest with you. I really would prefer the marshal to kind of comment on it if he's able to.
Madam Mayor, if uh Mr. Marquardt's not able to comment, I can uh provide uh uh any commentary for the uh mayor and counsel.
You know what, Mr. Mr. Marquardt, if I'm saying it correctly, can you call in? Can you make a call? Because you also can call if you can't do the video is not working.
I certainly apologize for the technical difficulties tonight. He's just done a lot of work on this and um I think it's best to uh comment on it if possible.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Does he know that he is frozen? I mean, can someone text him or something?
I think, you know, we can't hear him. Yeah, I think he's calling now. Just we have to make sure you answer the phone. Can we, are we able to hear him? Can someone, Ms. Walton, are you controlling this? Is someone able to call in and speak?
Yes, Mayor, I haven't gotten anything yet for anyone logging in.
Okay. There we are. Okay.
Okay, I believe I'm unmuted.
Okay, good.
Okay, uh good evening, Mayor, um and counsel. The the reason behind this, this whole push is to have um safer community for our residents. Our business owners, um anybody that transverses the city. Moving these uh tents out of the parking lots and putting them into a brick and mortar structure um is just safer all around. So uh we're modeling it after what Roseville has done. Roseville has moved theirs into a uh into brick and mortar, into a fully suppressed building. And uh that would uh be safer if it should be there a fire that uh at least the suppression system will contain it enough. Until we can arrive.
Any questions?
Sir Mayor. Um yeah, I had a question. So from the the memo, I mean, the memo essentially is for both uh. Ordinances. It's after the uh second one. Uh we mentioned that the fire department responded to. Four fires, but were were any of these fires at the location selling fireworks?
No, they were just uh fires that have occurred that were a direct result from fireworks. So um just again, moving those things out, putting them into stores. Um you know, people can still purchase them. That's fine. Um but uh no, there was no fires at the actual tents. Last year. Um.
Okay, yeah, I think just the the gentleman from the hearing of the public, I guess I before, you know, I heard him, I was thinking the. The same thing, you know, there are certain protocols we we follow for the outdoor uh tent. You know, selling of fireworks. And I I've thought, I guess it seemed reasonable and then businesses can, you know, it's a little something extra for them to do throughout the year. Um so I don't know. I guess just in general. I think I'm fine with how we do things now. Um but I don't know how the rest of the council felt.
Um but I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um um right now, um Fire Marshal. Our tents um required to have fire extinguishers at them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They are required to have fire extinguishers.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, Madam Mayor, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Uh again, thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. I I think what's important to understand. Uh with what's going on in the city is we don't necessarily have a business in the city that is putting a tent out in front of their business. What we have going on is a business in the city that's leasing part of the parking lot to somebody else to sell fireworks. At a tent in front of their facility. You know, the city gets a thirty-one dollar um permit fee. For this to happen and that's it. And that there's no revenue gain for the city. And so our position on it is. If fireworks are going to be sold in the city, if it's sold in a brick and mortar business, that adds value to our community. And that's really what we're after. And in a brick and mortar facility, it is safer because of a sprinkler system. And storage of the fireworks overnight. And the other concern we have is the uh the increased. Foot traffic that we have in parking lots, people going up to purchase fireworks and then back to vehicles. It's just increased risks. Especially around the Fourth of July when the tents are out and we're just trying to have safety in mind in all of it.
I mean, like I was talking to the fire. Uh not the fire, the fire director um earlier today. And um like I understand that sometimes when we have these tents out. You know, it causes, like you said, a lot of foot traffic and things like that and not always in a negative way. I mean, always in a negative way. But sometimes they leave, people leave trash and debris and things like that. But on a business side, when a business owner uh stepped in and spoke, that's why I like to hear another public because you actually get to hear what people have to say. You you know, who actually have these businesses and on the entrepreneur side, which I am and a couple of other people listening in. It's the way to bring in revenue as well because some people can't afford to put their business inside of a building. And then you also want to look at the safety hazards as well. So there's so many dynamics to this ordinance, what what it covers. So um just want to touch on the safetiness and also how you want your city to look and be perceived. And also um also entrepreneurship and people um. Using this as a way of, you know, taking care of their families or et cetera. So there's so many dynamics to this. And and what we write in policies and legislation is never easy because you you know, because. Somebody's going to be affected, but we want to make sure we do the best job that we can. So constantly having you more conversation on this. So.
Madam Mayor, if I could, oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make a comment procedurally regarding this particular uh proposed zoning ordinance amendment and the following.
Okay, let I'm gonna let Counselwoman Lucido go and then um Mr. Albright.
So yeah, really quick, actually, this Mr. Albright will be able to answer my question. Um so this is giving first reading to this ordinance. So people who wanted to set up this year for Fourth of July would still be able to because they would still be under this existing ordinance. Because we wouldn't be able to do second reading till our next meeting. Am I not, am I correct, Mr. Albright?
That is uh correct. Yeah, this would, this would not be applicable until after uh Fourth of July. When the council is able to uh conduct a second reading and the uh the zoning ordinance text amendment, which is ordinance number. Twenty-one dash twelve thirteen. Um that is uh that essentially coexists with the next proposed. Uh ordinance amendment. The reason that you have two different uh proposed uh amendments before the council is that the zoning ordinance text amendment. Had to uh be presented to the uh uh planning commission for a recommendation. The planning commission has reviewed the ordinance and made a recommendation to the council, whereas the next ordinance is just a. Uh an ordinance change to the city's regulatory ordinance, which does not need to go before the planning commission. So but both of these ordinances would require a first and second reading and uh the effect, if the ordinances were to pass. Uh they would not be effective until after July fourth.
Okay, Counselwoman Moore?
Oh, so, okay, so at this time, we haven't had an incident with fireworks in a tent. It is, am I correct about that? Fire Director?
Man. Man, to uh to my knowledge, uh we have not had any incidences as of yet. Um there's almost every city is moving to some form or fashion like this. Uh St. Clair Shores has it in their zoning. Roosevelt has it in a brick and mortar. Um Commerce Township, which is where one of the applicants. From, they don't even allow setting off fireworks without a permit, much less the sale of fireworks. Without it being in the same brick and mortar store. Um St. Clair Shores again doesn't allow it. More cities are. And I I believe if we don't uh get on the front end of this, um next year, you know, we may have twenty tents. We may have thirty tents. Spread out all over the city. So we're trying to get a foothold on it and make it safer. Again, the foot traffic with people. Going through the parking lots, um it is taking up parking spaces. It's taking up uh right-of-way in in parking lots. Um to have these tents and uh, you know, we just hope that it's uh that nobody does get hurt, but we don't want, if we can prevent that on the front side. That that's our main goal.
Thank you, Fire Marshal. No disrespect, Fire uh Fire Chief. You can call him Director all this time, but you know who I mean. So any more conversation on this? Like I said, I like, I like the new way that we're moving forward, but I understand. So uh I guess my next question is, why didn't we just upcharge the thirty-one dollars? Um in the past when we um, I think we did the amendment to uh the pricing and things like that earlier this year. I wonder why that didn't come up. I know we can't think of everything at one time. That could have lessened the um tents and things like that if you put it at a price that. For administrative fees and cleanup and things like that. So why didn't we? for administrative fees and cleanup and things like that. So why didn't we move to, you know, increasing the price to cover our services and things like that? Is, you know, instead of going to the next level of going into a building. Fire Marshal, what do you think about that?
Uh, ma'am, this isn't, uh, it wasn't about up, upcharging the fees or anything like that. Um, again, this is more about safety. Um, to have them in a building that will put a business in a building for an entire year, possibly. So that would be economic growth for our, our city. Also.
Any other question, Council?
No, Madam Mayor, I just have one quick comment, if you don't mind. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, like, those who did plan on having, because I know there's a couple of tents, tents that set up every single year. And I've visited a couple of those tents and there's really never seemed to be too much of an issue when I've been there, but I wanted to make sure they were at least able to do their business this year, because they may have been planning on that income. So as long as, you know, we're just doing the first reading and it's not going to affect us here sales, I'm fine with moving ahead with making a motion.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I motion to introduce and give first reading to ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve thirteen for a zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter fifty, zoning article four, administration and enforcement, section fifty dash fifty-three, temporary uses and article ten, office and business districts, section fifty dash ninety-one, B one, community business district of the ordinance of the city of East Point. Attached are the ordinance and the proposed provisions in the ordinance.
Support. Yeah, motion is support, call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Councilmember Curly? Councilmember Curly? Oh, I think you're on mute.
Somebody muted me, uh, yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Moving right along to introduction and first reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash one-two-one-four and ordinance text amendment to chapter twenty, fire prevention and protection, article that six, fireworks, section twenty dash ninety-five and twenty-nine dash ninety-six of the ordinance of the city of East Point. Council, discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'm motion to introduce and give first reading ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve fourteen for an ordinance text amendment to chapter twenty, fire, fire and prevention and protection, article six, fireworks, section twenty dash ninety-five and twenty-nine dash ninety-six of the ordinance of the city of East Point.
Support.
Motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Glad you brought this up. I think, uh, me and a Fire Marshal, um, we were talking about, I don't know, um, I think I've been in the city for almost twelve years now, so Council can help me with this. I think Mayor Pro Tem and, uh, Councilman Curly and, uh, Councilman DeMonaco and also Councilman Moore, she's been here a long time too, that it used to be, what, did you all have fireworks in the past and then you all stopped it in a certain location? You guys don't remember, Councilman, Councilman Curly, did you all have like a fireworks event here in East Point in the past?
I, I, I didn't get the question. Say the question again.
Oh, no problem. Did you all have a, uh, event? A fireworks event for the community in the past?
Oh, you, you mean when the city had fireworks?
Yes.
Oh, oh, Mayor, that was, that was so long ago. You, you were still in grade school. It was so long ago.
That's what I'm saying. We wanna, we were talking about bringing it back.
We had, oh, no, we had it at, uh, at, um.
Memorial Field.
Memorial Field, and it got, and it got to be really dangerous.
Oh, did it, okay.
If, well, we, if you talk about people running across ten-mile road and the cars running into each other, and, uh, so they cut it out. I was a, Madam, Madam Mayor, I was a private citizen then. It was so long ago, but I would not, I would not entertain a motion to, to bring it back.
No, we're not entertaining a motion. We entertain an idea.
I realize that. I, I, I understand, but if that should ever raise its head, I would, I would speak out against it.
Oh, it was pretty dangerous in the past, you said?
Very dangerous.
Okay, because I know the Fire, uh, our Fire Marshal, uh, found the location. And I think, you know, to make it safe, that was something that the director would have to figure out and how to make it safe.
Well, go to Roseville, watch theirs.
Yeah, I like doing stuff in my own city. But, um, moving right along to the introduction.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, if you, if you'd like to watch them in your own city, come on over on my porch and watch it right next door for two hours shooting off fire, fireworks. So you, you'd get enough of it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, item J, introduction and first reading ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve sixteen, a zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter fifty, zoning article nineteen, off-street parking, loading and layout standard, section fifty dash two-two-three, collective or shared parking of the ordinances of the city of East Point. Council, any discussion on that? If not, let's move right along.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, this is Otis Gadsden.
How you doing, sir?
Good to you. Um, you skipped over item I.
Do I?
Yes, twenty, um, twenty-one dash twelve fifteen.
Thank you, sir. I'm just, I'm ready to go, just. That's all right.
I was looking for the number, I'm like sixteen. Where is that?
Well, since I read all that, maybe not have to read it next time, right? I'm gonna just say item J. So let's go to item I, uh, introduction and first reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve fifteen, a zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter fifty, zoning article with that eighteen, sign, section fifty dash one-nine-three, changeable message sign of the ordinances of the city of East Point. Council.
Mad, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This, since this is the first reading, and I, I know we have some paperwork about that, but the audience doesn't know what, what the heck we're talking about. Uh, whoever wrote this or recommending it, if they're watching, can we not have somebody let the people know what we're voting on, rather than us?
Of course, um, the city ma, I usually like the, uh, assist, assistant city manager or the manager, uh, speak on it, or whoever is in that department speak on, on it and do a summary. So we're talking about fine section, changeable message sign of the ordinance of the city of East Point, so. Uh, our assistant, Ms. Walton?
Yes, I'm taking a look now, one second, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, what are we doing?
She's gonna do an executive summary of this in layman's terms for the residents without being so long, it just goes straight to the meat of what we're voting on today.
Mr. Albright, is this something that was sent over from you or?
This, this, uh, ordinance, zoning ordinance text amendment actually was in front of the, uh, the planning commission. And, uh, they did hold a hearing, they are recommending approval. Um, there is the, uh, the zoning ordinance text amendment and also attached to that are the changes being made to the city's existing ordinance. What it does is it allows, uh, instead of twenty-five percent, sixty percent of the total permitted display area of the sign. And it's also adds a section that electronic changeable messages shall be allowed in all zoning districts except the B two, uh, district. And so those are the changes being made. Uh, I believe that this originated with a request from the zoning board of appeals, uh, several months ago. And so that request then went through the city planner. Uh, the city planner then, uh, came up with some, uh, changes to the, uh, uh, to the existing ordinance. Um, it was then put in ordinance form by my office and then the planning commission, uh, reviewed it and, uh, recommended approval to the proposed changes. And so those are changes to these, the existing, uh, city's changeable message sign ordinance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One quick question. Um, thank you. Mr. Albright, do you remember why it was twenty-five to sixty? I was trying to recall, uh, the reasoning, but I guess that'd be consistent, at least with the master plan and at least not inconsistent with it, I guess, the, uh, the change?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I believe also, um, if I could just also add, what was happening is that the, uh, zoning board of appeals, uh, was receiving variance requests. And this seemed to be, uh, uh, consistent with the various variance requests. And so the zoning board of appeals, um, thought, well, we're getting so many of these variance requests, it seems as if perhaps the, the zoning ordinance should actually be changed. And so the planning commission, uh, uh, took into consideration that recommendation, and this is the, uh, proposed, uh, zoning ordinance text amendment that's been, uh, recommended for approval by the planning commission, and it's now in front of the, uh, city council for a first and possible, uh, second reading.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I feel so much better if you like, uh, if it's okay to make a motion, now not, now that I've been informed of what this was all about. So I would move to introduce and give first reading to ordinance number twenty-one dash uh, one-two-one-five for a zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter fifty, zoning article eight, sign, section fifty dash one-ninety-three, changeable message signs of the ordinances of the city of East Point.
Thank you.
Support. And, uh, motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Item J, I think I'm on the right track, Mr. Otis Gadsden. He's gonna keep me on the right track. Introduction and first reading ordinance number twenty-one dash one-two-one-six, a zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter fifty, zoning article nineteen, off-street parking, loading and layout standards, section fifty dash two-two-three, collective or shared parking of the ordinance of the city of East Point. Our, uh, assistant city manager, give us the executive summary of this.
This also was sent over from Mr. Albright's office.
Mr. Albright, please.
That is correct, Ms. Walton. I'd be happy to, Madam Mayor. Uh, this, um, zoning ordinance text amendment has also been in front of the, uh, planning commission for a recommendation. Uh, the planning commission, uh, has recommended that the, uh, council approve uh, this zoning ordinance text amendment. What this essentially, uh, provides for is a collective or shared parking, uh, ordinance. Currently, the city does not have any type of, uh, language that covers this and what this is, allows, uh, a property owner to do. If their particular property or for proposed use does not have enough, uh, parking for that particular site, then they're able to enter into a written agreement with another property owner. Uh, that written agreement would be recorded with the register of deeds. Uh, a, a proposed shared parking agreement is attached to this zoning amendment, which contains all of the language and the requirements that the parties would be bound to. Uh, this agreement, again, would be reported with the register of deeds and would, uh, run with the land. Uh, the purpose for this is to allow somebody, uh, uh, greater use of their land if they do not have the necessary parking per city ordinance. Rather than having to go for variance in front of the zoning board of appeals, they then could, uh, enter into the shared parking agreement with, uh, a ready and willing, able, uh, property owner who has additional parking, uh, to then allow the, uh, proposed use to be utilized, uh, by the person wishing to do that.
I'm happy about this ordinance. Um, I remember before becoming mayor, it was a lot of people that were getting into a lot of altercations because of uh, not having enough parking, a lot of, uh, hair salon lines and stuff like that have, uh, multiple customers and clients and other businesses that, uh, shared that parking was being used by their clients, and it was a lot of back and forth. So I'm glad that this is in place so that they can have some type of understanding, um, to, uh, moving forward. And, um, we can create more peace. So, uh, Council, any more conversation on this? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just, I agree with you. I'm just happy that we're friendly, getting something right in here, explaining what these businesses need to do to, you know, offer shared parking. Um, because I know that when I was on planning commission, as liaise on, we had multiple businesses come forward wanting to do shared parking.
Sure, and there?
Yes, sir.
Couple of quick comments too.
Okay.
Um, I'm also happy, I think we've just got too many parking spots in the whole world overall, so I'm glad see that maybe we can take better advantage of the ones that we do. And I think, for example, like the, the last example I probably used with someone is if you had like a barber shop and a restaurant that's busiest at night, you've got this lot, you know, say each of them needed twenty spots right now, our ordinance will require forty spots altogether. But if one lot's being used earlier in the day and one later in the day, why are we, you know, paving forty, um, forty parking spots in our city? Not only is that taking up, uh, space that could be green space, but then it's also less burden on the businesses having to maintain twenty spots each, you know? Obviously, uses can change with buildings, uh, but hopefully this can work out, you know, just generally for the businesses. And I did just, there was one thing, one very minor thing I didn't like about the, uh, ordinance was that the property owner that's essentially, uh, allowing their spaces to be used was called the burdened property owner. I like something more like cooperative or donor, uh, as a term instead of burdened. It seems like this should be a win-win and not, uh, necessarily a burden for that business, uh. Very minor, but I wouldn't mind seeing that, uh, amendment to some other term that's more positive.
Like something like the easement or something that's not like, you know, like you said, burden.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah.
It's just legalese.
It, it is, yeah. It's, it's actually, that's terminology that actually comes from, uh, real property law, uh, where you, and it, it derives from actual easements where you have, um, uh, the burdened property owners, the actual owner, and they're allowing there are a section of their property to be utilized for an easement to allow someone perhaps to, uh, access a landlocked property. Uh, but it certainly isn't, uh, required language. And, uh, it can be, uh, it can be amended, uh, per the wishes of the city council.
I'll just read it in my head as, uh, in parentheses, co, uh, cooperative donor property.
Yeah, it, it, it's just legalese and it's, it is what that is.
Yeah, they use that in real estate, so, yeah. They call that an easement, burden on the, you know?
And we'll change the whole industry at some point.
I would like to move, um, if we can, if everyone is done.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, to introduce the first reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve sixteen for a zoning ordinance, um, text amendment to charter fifty, zoning article nineteen, off-street parking, loading and layout, um, standards. Section fifty dash twenty-three, I'm sorry, um, section fifty dash two-hundred-and-twenty-three, collective and or shared parking of the ordinance of the city of East Point.
Support.
Motion is support, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Next is discussion on potential social district. Now, the last meeting we had, um, it wasn't, it was a special meeting and our, uh, Councilwoman, Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Lucido and Councilman DeMonaco talked about potential social district and, uh, presented it. And I know, uh, Councilman Curly and Councilwoman Moore, you were out, you know, um, sick at that time, and we're glad you're back, by the way. And so I asked to put it back on here to bring it back just for, um, those residents. I don't think it was any resident that really came out that night, probably two or three. And just, uh, have Councilman DeMonaco kind of like talk about what we were talking about, the idea and the vision. And, uh, so, uh, when you miss certain meetings or don't know about it, you still want to make sure that our residents can understand what our vision is and see what they have to say and not go move forward without you having input in that. So Councilman DeMonaco, you want to start the discussion on potential social district?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, first of all, just, yeah, Mayor Pro Tem Lucido and I had put this on the agenda at that last special meeting. We just thought this was a creative, uh, proposal about a recent law that was passed in Michigan called a social district that we thought maybe we could implement at some point in East Point. Um, as some people probably saw, and maybe like you said, uh, Mayor, probably more people saw it on the news than on our council meeting. Uh, it was, uh, It was on the local Channel Seven news where Sarah and I were able to talk about it a little bit. And actually, Ms. Walton, if you can allow screen sharing again, I could share the same thing that I shared at that meeting. But in the meantime, Ms. Lucino, if you had anything to add, and then I can kind of show at least the just very brief proposals that we had suggested at that meeting.
So, yeah, the only thing I would really add is that, you know, this is something that's just an idea right now. It's not something that's happening for sure or anything like that. There's a lot of rezoning and things like that that we're, we kind of want to do as like the first steps in leading up to this. But we definitely do encourage like all the residents, if you have any feedback, whether it's positive or negative, like I would really love to hear from all of you on your, you know, your opinions on, you know, one way or the other.
All right, yeah, let me share my screen here. And so I guess, first of all, a social district is essentially just like an area that the city council can designate where you can, you know, eat and drink outside, and it's got to be surround, surrounding an area where there's at least three liquor licenses. So, you know, people can socialize outside, and usually in other cities, it's been made into this more creative area where you kind of block off, you know, maybe a typical area that's not blocked off. We were proposing, as you can see on Google Maps, and I, and we have a little overlay here, we would block off one side of Kelly, so then traffic will be one lane each side on the other side. And you'd be able to hang out in the median area, you know, we've got a nice median on Kelly. And so you'd be able to hang out there, eat and drink, and just like in this proposed area. So again, this is more of, we were calling it a proactive social district because you need three liquor licenses to be able to even just like create this like commons area. And the green part would be considered the commons area, and these other lines are kind of where cars would pull in and park or drive by. And so this area, if you can't tell, it's just south of Nine Mile on Kelly here, basically from Empire down to Rosetta was one idea we had. And again, we just wanted to kind of bring up the general concept and maybe not like the exact boundaries or anything, but this is like one certain proposal. And then we had maybe like a secondary location could be just a little further south. There's a little extra green space, but that could go from like Lister to just about Topher. But really, you just need an area to hang out. We could do a little bit of improvement, too, then, like on the the charrette that our city did probably five, six years ago, a group came in from Toronto and kind of just envisioned like four or five different areas in the city on what we could do. And they had some pretty neat ideas on the median for Kelly, and I think we could actually implement some of those with a project like this. You know, they had, you know, maybe adding a path through the middle of the median. You'd have little food stations or drink stations, areas to sit, you could show public art, you know, things like that, you know, we can of course add our, you know, if this does end up working out. But so that's essentially, we just wanted to bring this up now just to get feedback from everyone, like Mayor Pro Tim Lucino said, and just get it out there because, as we said, also, this is more of a proactive thing. We wouldn't be able to even vote right now to do this because the it requires like the area to have three liquor licenses. St. Clair Shores is doing one over at Nine Mile and Greater Mac, and then downtown in Mount Clemens in terms of Macomb County, and then there's some other ones in the metro Detroit area.
And Councilman DeMonaco, if I may, real quick, too, when we had the meeting, we were discussing it, I think the mayor had a really good idea also because this would only be done on the weekends. You know, where we would have the social district, it wouldn't be every day and it'd only be in the summer. You know, she had mentioned that maybe even like, you know, earlier in the day on Saturday or Sunday, like we could do farmers markets on that median also. I thought that was a really fantastic idea because then we'd be utilizing it during the day and then still have the social district aspect at night.
Yeah, that is a great idea.
Did you have little concerts? I'm sorry, excuse me, like small concerts and stuff like that, because you know, I know a lot of people were mentioning the open drinking and things like that. But like you said, it's, we still need three liquor licenses, whatever. Even if we scratched that and didn't do the liquor licenses and just did something as part of family event and an outing. So as far as we did something in autumn, you know, I'm sorry, in, in the fall or something like that, and we did apple cider, you know, and you know, just did something more family friendly, things like that. And we don't even involve liquor, everything, you know, and I don't think this was a concept to involve liquor. It was a a concept to do more things outside, especially due to COVID, you know. What better way to even bring this idea here? But I think we have a lot of, a long way to go. This idea was brought, brought up, you know, a couple of years ago, but the councilwoman and councilmen run it back and found a location where it would be beneficial at. And so it would bring more businesses together, more families together. And, you know, and it's what a lot of people are doing. And so I think, I think it would be a good idea, but, you know, we would have to talk more about it. And talk to the business owners around there, see what the residents say, the director of public safety, AEW. So it's a lot more that goes into it. But just, you know, putting it out here as your elected officials and talking about how we just want to, we're talking about being proactive and innovative and things like that. It's just something that the council put together and said, it's, you know, just the idea, you know, so I appreciate that.
Mayor, if I could just share one more thing real quick.
Okay.
Was just the charrette, I was looking for it, and I think we'll just need to re-upload it to our new website because my, my link no longer works, but I found it in my files here. If I can just share real quick, here is the charrette that we're talking about. They called it Park Point, but as you can see, this, this picture is kind of what I was trying to explain a minute ago. This is through the median. Some of you can probably recognize St. Thomas in the back left there. So this is a little closer, you know, to Stevens, but this, this is essentially something we'd be able to do in that area. And again, this is the charrette that happened in like January twenty fifteen, I guess, is when it was completed here from the Institute Without Boundaries. It was a group of students that came from Toronto and visited the city and put, put this whole document together. So that was all, Mayor.
Any comments, council? Okay, thank you for putting that together and all the hard work you guys came about doing. I appreciate that. Hopefully, we can come back and and bring it here. And if it's not, we can do something that you know, you know, connects the people in a, in a different way. We, we, we'll figure it out. I know we have some innovative, proactive council members here, and we have some residents that can help us put stuff together and these ideas. So I'm going to move right along.
Actually, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, one, one more thing. If we could, I guess, maybe on the next agenda, talk about zoning changes on Kelly that would be more consistent with the master plan, I think, Mayor Pro Tim. If you wanted to talk about that, I think that was one last thing we wanted to talk about regarding a social district or not, we, we need to do that for the master plan going forward.
So, so really, my recommendation, I think Councilman Vonaco would be to send that to the planning commission to look at changing the zoning along Kelly Road to being multi-use. So it is in line with our master plan. I know that, you know, they've mentioned many times that they want to start, you know, implementing this master plan, and I think this would be a good first or not first step, because we've actually done quite a few things in there. But, you know, one of the steps into, you know, starting to get the master plan implemented. So I think the, I would rather the recommendation come from the planning commission first, so I'd rather have them review that first.
I guess that's what I meant to say, that we motion to just throw it on their agenda if.
Yeah, I would support that motion.
Motion and support, please call the roll. Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Next item is discussion on future council meetings in person. Council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So I added this to the agenda because beginning in July first, you know, pretty much everything in the state is, you know, starting to open. You no longer have to wear your mask indoors if you have been vaccinated, you know, ballgames. Everything else is pretty much opening and getting back to normal. So I was just thinking that, you know, we should probably consider going back in person. So we have, you know, we're doing everything just like everyone else. I know that maybe some boards and commissions might not feel comfortable yet moving back in person, so I'd like to, you know, leave it open to those boards and commissions to make that decision for themselves, if that's possible. You know, like giving them the option of still meeting Zoom via Zoom, but I think, you know, the five of us, we, you know, I think that it's time that maybe we should I think most communities are meeting in person now or slowly starting to return to in-person. So I just thought it was a good time to discuss this.
Hey, council and discussion, Councilman Curly?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Sarah, for that suggestion. Here's my concern. If we go back, you said July first, that's, that's next week, that's the next meeting. My biggest concern is that people coming in trying to decide, do they need to have their mask on? Do they not have to have the mask on? And our, as you know, our meetings are traditionally very long, two, three, four hours. It would be very uncomfortable to ask somebody to sit there in the council chambers for three hours with their mask on. If the administration would make a decision saying, that's it, we're done. People can come in City Hall, they don't have to have a mask on. They, you have to have it on today. I went over there, had to have a mask on. I am with, I, I, I agree with you. It would be great to go back. I'm ready to go back. But I'm concerned about our, our citizens who come in there. If they hadn't gotten their shots, are they going to tell the truth? And if they have to wear the mask, that's a lot to ask somebody to sit there for three hours while we go through an agenda item. So bottom line, I would like to see the administration move to no mask necessary from now on, and then we all could join, join together at City Hall.
Councilman DeMonaco, if I may, really quick, I mean, Councilman Curly, just to respond. So in City Hall right now, you don't have to wear a mask if you've been vaccinated. We're following the governor's orders, so as long as you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. And I understand that it might be uncomfortable for those who haven't been vaccinated to wear a mask. But those attending our meetings, I think that if they still tuned in, even if we were meeting in person because they didn't want to wear their mask and they decided, for whatever reason, that they decided not to get, receive the vaccine, that they can just make that decision not to attend our meetings in person if they don't want to wear their mask. I mean, I, I think that you know, there's, of course, not everyone is going to be honest. We, we live in a world where people lie, and we know that, but every place we go now, we're taking that chance with that person standing in line next to us, not vaccinated and not wearing a mask. So what's the difference if that's happening, you know, here at City Hall?
So if we have us five elected officials, and we have the city attorney, the city manager, the finance director, if in any one of us and them say, well, no, I only had one shot, then they would be required to wear a mask for the three or four hour meeting, right?
Correct.
Unless they tell us that they had both shots, I guess they could do that.
Councilman DeMonaco?
Yeah.
I think, and I think it goes along with Ms. Lucino and Mr. Curly here, if, if we do meetings in person, once we are able to do like a hybrid meeting where, right now, I think probably plenty of residents would rather sit at home and say their three minutes at hearing of the public than have to sit at City Hall, like you're saying, Mr. Curly, for three hours. Can we set that up? I think, how about we go in person? That'd be my suggestion. Once we can introduce people for hearing of the public via Zoom or, or, you know, however we want to do it for hearing of the public and just continue to do our meeting, though in person, but people could still call in and not have to be physically present at City Hall.
Yes, I agree with Councilman DeMonaco. That's what I would like to do, too. And I believe that's how a lot of other communities are doing it, where the public can still call in virtually and still attend Zoom and still be heard. It's just that they're still meeting in person. And if residents do want to come to City Hall, they still can. I mean, you know, if they could, if they don't have a computer and they want to start attending meetings again, then they would, they would be able to do that.
Yeah, for sure.
A quick question. Since the meeting of the public, once the media of the public starts, people get up and they speak in the microphone. Will there be someone there washing it down every time the next person come up because now they're using the same microphone?
No, that's a good point.
You know.
I think we might be able to order covers that you can just replace on it every time someone goes up and speaks.
And also, will there be any social distancing? Because they, even though they gotten rid of the mask mandate, they still said people should social distance. Will we have everyone fill every spot right next to each other, or how would that work? Like inches away, shoulder to shoulder, the way it normally used to be?
I think we should go back in, in person, once we have a strategy on doing that, because all these questions that's being asked are really valid questions. And I think all of us have, you know, want to go back to normal, and so do our residents. And I like the hybrid, I like what every council person said. But I think we should have a strategy before we move forward. Councilwoman Lucino, what's some of the things that Councilwoman Moore was saying? What do you, what do you think on that?
Well, I mean, yeah, this was definitely just a discussion here today. I mean, that's why I put it on there was just, you know, to make a discussion about it. So we could start putting those things in place so we can move forward. But even the social distancing thing, in my opinion, I, I know it's, it's recommended, but I don't think it's actually come July first. It's a law that you have to be six feet apart anymore. So I think that if you, as a resident, came in and you wanted to be six foot apart from people, then you're making that decision on where you sit or whether you want to stay and attend from home via Zoom. So I think, I, I think I want, kind of want to put more of that power in the residents' hands in making those decisions instead of us kind of like saying, no, you know, this is what you have to do. So I would, I would leave it up to, you know, each individual has their own their, their own like medical conditions or whatever that they're dealing with, and I think they should be able to make those decisions for themselves.
I agree.
And I, Madam, Madam Mayor?
Okay, yes, sir.
I think with this discussion tonight, it's a good discussion. And I think, however, I think that we have to bring in the administration with this. Because the wide question, can we, can we be live and in person and still be on Zoom? I can't answer that question. I think we have to take the technology, and Cardi, you would know about, more about technology with that than I will ever know. But I think we got to bring the administration in here and say, is it practical that we're going to be live and in person and be on Zoom at the same time? I don't know. But that's my discussion.
All right, I think once we put, Mayor Pro Tim, you want to put this back up, once we have a strategy and we know how to move forward, I think it, you know, like you said, leaving it to the residents' hands, but you know, as a government entity, it's our job to put those strategies forward on, on our end. So whatever people do as individuals, that's what they do like you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, like, I was agreeing with what you were saying, what people, you know, choose to do, but on our end, you know, making sure that, you know, mic or we can have something, something else they can speak on, or we get, you know, have some type of strategy on how they can, you know, doing the hybrid and how they can come up to speak. If we have some type of strategy or way we can do that and create that and then bring it back, what do you think?
So, yeah, what if we make a motion tonight, just asking administration to develop like some sort of strategy to make it possible for us to come start meeting in person again?
Okay. Council. Motion and support, call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Next item is discussion on Juneteenth event that was put on here by Councilwoman Lucino. Councilwoman, you have the floor?
So, yes, over the weekend, we did receive the final event application for the Juneteenth event that is proposed for Saturday. There's still a couple of like unanswered questions that I, that I do have this evening, but I would like to hopefully get this approved this eve, you know, approved this evening. So we can proceed with the, so the young woman can proceed with the event on Saturday. I don't know if the rest of council has had an opportunity to review the application, or if the young woman is here. or if the young woman is here. Um, I can't remember her name offhand.
Um, Ms. Bonner?
Yes, Ms. Bonner is here. Um, maybe she might have some, something to say about it.
Ms. Bonner, are you on here tonight? Okay, I don't think she is. I think she was supposed to. But, um, I can answer some questions because I've been working with her on this. So I just give you guys some updates of what I know. And, um, so, uh, right now, working with her, we have been able to get sponsorships from McDonald's. Um, I have a really, uh, good connection with them and they were able to give us, I believe, over three hundred, uh, cards of, you know, to get drinks and things like that for, uh, the residents. They also did a sponsorship of five hundred dollars and we're gonna do a small semi commercials, just thanking them on behalf of the city of East Point doing that. I was also able to work with Foot Locker, um, our local Foot Locker right here at East Point. And they donated, uh, I believe over two thousand dollars for, uh, a screening and things like that. I, I'm not, um, all the way positive of how much, but I believe it was a nice amount to make sure that things were paid for. And also, I reached out to White Castles because they reached out to me. So when they reached out to the mayor, I'm gonna speak on behalf of the city always and, uh, ask them to do a sponsorship in feeding the community. So I haven't heard anything about that. Uh, so, you know, um, we can, uh, feed anyone that shows up and just, you know, building these sponsorships with, uh, all these, um, multimillion dollar businesses. So if we need things or, uh, in our community, we have those connections, you know, and I'll share that with council as well. So, you know, so we have sponsorships from Foot Locker, McDonald's, and hopefully White Castles. And she has a, a band as well, hopefully a band or DJ. I was gonna get Councilwoman DeMonaco to do it, but he stopped working in the band. So that was out of the question. Or, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Lucido husband, but, uh, I think they're busy that day. But so they got a DJ coming out, uh, dancer, spoken word, a comedian. And, um, we're gonna have speakers. I will be speaking, the mayor of the city of Harper Woods, Mayor Protem, Lucido will be speaking, and also the state rep, uh, Kevin Hertel as well. And any, uh, council members or anybody else would like to speak, we welcome you as well, um, to this event. And so I believe it's gonna be a nice event. It's our first event, uh, for Juneteenth as a city, and I'm excited. And also the city of East Point is sponsoring it. So I think what she was asking for, I think we got the letter. Did council get the letter?
We got an event application, but there was, I did have a couple of quick questions. Like, are we looking for the city to pay for anything?
Uh, she was looking for the city to pay for the park. Let me, let me go to my.
When you, when you say the park, do you mean you want us to cover the event application fee? Because there shouldn't be a fee for to use the park. There's a event application fee, I believe, of seventy-five dollars.
Okay, yeah, the event application fee. The film licensing from Swank Publishing. I wish I can share this screen. I'm still learning how to do this. Let me see if I can be as good as, uh, Councilwoman DeMonaco. Okay. That's a little up East Point. Okay, that's not it. That's coming up next. Okay, can you guys? Can you guys see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the letter, okay. There, she was supposed to send this to you. I don't know why. I don't know why you guys didn't get it. Said, please accept this letter of, as a request of sponsorship for our upcoming Juneteenth event in collaboration with the city of East Point. This collaboration effort is taking place on June nineteenth from five to nine. That evening will highlight black entrepreneurship, artistry, and culture. Our collective visions for this event can only be realized through the ongoing support and partnerships with our sponsors, and I named some of them. We invite your participation as a sponsor for this event. We are asking for a donation to cover the cost of the event insurance, film licensing, stage rental, and porta potty rentals. This donation will ensure this event is successful and can become a continuous success. Attached is a detailed cost breakdown of what your donation will include. Going down, the film licensing from Swank Publishing is four hundred and thirty-five dollars. The stage rental from Pegasus Entertainment is a hundred and thirty dollars. The porta potty rental, I believe that's for two, that's five hundred and fifty dollars. And the event insurance from R, I don't know, uh, what that stands for, RVNA, is two hundred dollars.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Is she asking for us to cover the cost of DPW services too? Because I'm assuming that probably I'll be working overtime on the weekend.
Um, that she didn't ask for, um, as far as cleanup, I think we were gonna, the Foot Locker offered some of their workers to volunteer that day. And so, um, I believe we have clean, you know, cleanup that day already. But she didn't, uh, mention that part.
Because I know she asked in her event application, I believe, for like garbage cans and things like that to be put, put out by DPW. So I was just wondering if she was asking for the city to cover that expense also.
Okay, I'm not sure that, uh, I have to get back with her. Because I think she talked to, I don't know, did she talk to you, um, excuse me, uh, Mr. Palucci, did she talk to you? I think she did talk to DPW. Is he still on here?
Yes, I'm still here. And yeah, she did reach out to me and I was gonna bring some garbage cans out there on Friday evening, leave some extra bags, and then just pick them up later that night.
Okay, that's right. Thank you.
So we're already working that Saturday.
Okay. Councilwoman?
Oh, I don't have anything else right now.
Okay, now, when we are, uh, approving this, are we approving the cost that was given? And everything she asked for, so that's what.
Mayor, I had a question about that.
Yes, sir.
Um, what, y- you said Foot Locker was donating money. Are they covering these expenses though?
She is, actually, she's, well, we, in order for her to play the film, she had to pay for all these things, plus a lot of stuff she couldn't pay for, like, uh, DJ and things like that. So in order to get the additional entertainment with Foot Locker money, she wasn't trying to spend Foot Locker money uh, for the equipment and not have any entertainment. So that is why she put the cost breakdown on here, so that we can at least, uh, pay for the film. Because she's, um, paying for, Foot Locker is paying for, um, for the display to be played on and things like that. And she's paying for the tables and chairs. And, um, yeah, I forgot what else she's paying for. That's why she should have got on here. But, uh, but she's been so busy working this project. But so she's, the film license, I don't think she knew, and I didn't either. So we had to both do our research because I've never did this either in, in the city. And so with the film licensing, I looked it up for her. She didn't know that was gonna be taken out the Foot Locker budget. And so she had to do the research and found out it was almost five hundred dollars. And then since the school, the superintendent didn't allow us in the schools due to COVID, she didn't know we was gonna have to pay that five hundred and fifty dollar porta potty fee. So when Foot Locker gave us all this money, we thought, we, we believed it was ongoing on entertainment and things like that. But then all these other cost breakdowns kind of, um, came into play. And we didn't want to use all the money just on equipment and we have no entertainment because nobody is sponsoring their, their event. That's a, that, that's a big event and a lot of people are booked that day. And people are very expensive now that, um, you know, COVID is kind of calmed down a little bit. You know, these bans, everybody are, you know, is outside and, 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 you know, entertainments are getting paid. And, you know, people are getting to some type of normcy. People are charging high prices. I think the ban that we, uh, wanted to get was like seven hundred dollars. And we tried to negotiate, uh, you know, a lesser charge and they wasn't backing down. So if Foot Locker gave us two thou, two thousand dollars, seven hundred is already taking us thirteen hundred dollars left, you know. And so, you know, it wasn't, they didn't, you know, they didn't give us that much money to do the vision that we were proposing it to do.
Um, are there, outside of these costs, um, is there a recommended, um, motion then from the city to cover everything we'd normally? Covering on the past, we've just made sure to motion to make sure all the different items in the, um, special event application are covered. Because I know we've mentioned, uh, I see event insurance is listed here. It's, I think, the first time we talked about it at the meeting. I just want to make sure that's all like, uh, set up like we normally have it. So does that miss Walton or anything? Um, do we have a recommended motion then from city administration side? Since it sounds like, I guess, uh, there's been some talk.
Um, this is the first that I'm seeing the cost breakdown. So that was part of the concern that we had had. And I had talked with Ms. Bonner, um, weeks ago, and that was one of the main things, was getting a cost breakdown so that we knew what needed to be in the motion for council. And especially not knowing like the timing and how many hours and things with DPW, it makes it difficult to make a formal motion to cover everything. So I don't know if Rich has a suggestion of what would stand, uh, for, for an appropriate motion?
But I think if we don't even pay for the film licensing and things like that, the porta potty rental, I think, is very, is something that we need. If we have a park with no bathroom and, you know, like most parks. But I think that we should, you, at least offer, you know, residents and guests somewhere to use the bathroom as a city. Especially if it's sponsored by a city, you know, to tell people they don't have a bathroom. I think that's just, you know, doesn't look good for us, so. And, um, and then we're doing two events in one day and this did just come about, you know, uh, so I do, I really do think the porta potty is something that we do need, that's hands down. And like I said, she did a cost breakdown and gave it to, um, Foot Locker. And Foot Locker is paying for a certain amount of things. But, you know, as a city, I just want us to be able to utilize, you know, use these things and so, especially because it's something new. You know, we wanted to make it look nice, you know, and so, but it's up to council what you, uh, feel. We just have to make, you know, and, you know, and then if White Castles didn't sponsor us, the five hundred dollars that McDonald's gave us, we were gonna have to buy snacks for everybody. And we're talking about a nice amount of people coming out. Five hundred dollars doesn't go a long way. So, you know, um, and then we have to do marketing. We didn't even put marketing on here. Um, we didn't put food on here. She didn't put tables and chairs on here or tents and various items or T-shirts or things like that. Uh, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I got a question for Mr. Palucci, really.
Okay.
Um, I was just wondering, like, I know the city already rents Porta John's, um, in different locations at different times of the year. Um, is there, I mean, I don't know if you'd be able to get a better rate than what they're getting as an independent? Like, because we already rent them like regularly?
Uh, you know, I can check on that tomorrow. I know right now we're having problems with, uh, Spindler Park bathrooms. So I've got two outhouses over there. But, uh, to be honest with you, I don't know what we're paying right now.
Because we're a regular customer, I just thought we might be able to get like a little bit better of a price and someone calling regular, you know.
I can get a price, uh, first thing, I can have a, a price on that at tomorrow's, uh, um, city manager meeting.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, we have a gentleman that, uh, has ordered, um, Porta John's for our cruise course, uh, Saturday. I can call him first thing in the morning to find out, um, what we pay for each porta potty. But, um, two hundred and fif, two hundred and twenty-five dollars or whatever it is. Sounds off, I can off a lot. I'm not sure we paid that much. Uh, but I'll call, I'll, I'll call the gentleman that ordered them and, uh, I can, uh, let you know how, what, how much they are that, and the company that we ordered from.
Okay.
I don't remember what, TP or something like that. But, uh, Darren can check too. But I'm sure it's not five hundred and fifty for two Porta Johns.
Okay, yes, five hundred and fifty. And I, and we, we, and we tried to get it sponsored. Trust me, you know, I'm always trying to get something free for the city. And they were saying, you know, due to COVID, there, you know, they didn't make a lot of money last year because it wasn't too many events. And so, like I said, a lot of people, a lot of people are, um, back into business, so their prices increased. So, and then we tried to use, uh, our city stage, but that's being used for the cruise, of course. And so, um, one thirty, a hundred and thirty dollars is pretty cheap to me, actually, because they can be expensive. And we tried to use it from, um, last time I did the last event in that park, uh, for a ba, bookbag event, we, uh, used Pastor Lancaster's, uh, stage for free. And he said it wasn't that big. So everything she did, you know, everything that, uh, resources I used, we tried to get a lot of this stuff free. We can't get past the licensing. You have to pay for that. But the stage, we tried to, uh, get it, but it was so, it was so heavy and we didn't have a delivery from the church or, and it wasn't big enough for what we were trying to do. So we tried to get that free. I think she tried to reach out to Mr. Palucci to try to get it free. And the event insurance, we couldn't pass that. So a lot of stuff we tried to get for free or get sponsored and wasn't, uh, successful in doing that. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to this event and I'd be happy to motion to approve the special event application. But the, the cost breakdown, like, funding the event is just kind of a concern to me. Because I mean, even like, you know, on the same day, we've got the cruise and they cover their costs. You know, what about all the other special then applications we do throughout the year? You know, they're gonna say how, you know, why aren't we helping out with them too then? You know, how do we determine, you know, to help one event and not another?
I think a lot of event, well, that's why, uh, it was, I was, once she came with this event, I pushed it for the Arts Commission to do it because the commission actually pays all the city and funding. Don't we, don't we use city funding to do city events with different, with different groups? And they were so busy with other things, they wasn't able to get to this one. And so usually we do pay for a city, you know, events through the city.
I thought that the, I thought that they were invited out and then they didn't show to the Arts Commission meeting, though I thought. That's what happened.
Madam, madam. I'm not sure that. I heard one thing and so she said she didn't get back. They said she didn't get back. So I'm not sure.
Madam Mayor, I, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I, I did send them the, the Zoom link, but it was only one meeting. So it, it was, you know what I'm saying, that we had, the Arts Commission had, you know, before this. Anyway, so even if they would have missed that one, it wa, it wouldn't have mattered. There wasn't enough, the Arts Commission only meets once a month. So it wouldn't have been enough, I don't think it would have been enough time for the Arts Commission to plan this event anyways. And this would have, they didn't have enough money. I, I even left in their budget to cover what you're, what you're requesting today anyways. You know, so, um, but I would, I would, I, I do want to see this event happen. I, I really do want to see this event happen. So I think that, I know like Councilwoman DeMonaco is like concerned with like us covering costs. But I think that the city, I don't want it to be a city necessarily sponsored event. I want to support the young woman who's hosting this event and approve this application on her behalf. But I think I would be okay with providing porta potties if, you know, Mr. Palucci could, you know, order the porta potties to be sent to the Fairlane Park. Um, because I don't think that's out of the realm for the city to, um, have the porta potties in the park to begin with, whether the event was happening or not. So, um, but I think they would have to definitely provide proof of insurance prior to the event, that the, the organi, you know, the or, the organization that's hosting it.
Okay.
The, um, what is it? Three one three is it called?
Oh, six thirty event?
Six thirty events, yes.
Right.
So, um, so I don't know how the rest of the council would feel about that. That would kind of like at least help them out a little bit too, if we did the porta potty rental. And I think we could give a better price and even the five fifty. So I would just probably leave it up to Mr. Palucci to try to order porta potties for the event himself and have them delivered.
Okay, so we're gonna cover the cost of the, um, application and the porta potty rental in lieu of what Mr. Palucci and Councilman Curly find out and research for a cheaper, better price, correct?
Right, yeah, I would just leave it. I would just have the city, you know, um, deliver those porta potties there. And then the proof of insurance is gonna have to be provided to the city prior to the event. So I think that would be. I, I don't know, like I said, how the rest of the council feels about that.
Well, I, as I said before, uh, Madam Mayor, um, Aaron can check the prices that they've ordered. And, uh, I'll check with the gentleman who ordered. I don't, I think we ordered probably fifteen or sixteen porta potties. So the price was pretty good. Um, so I'll, I'll, I'm, I'm, I've been trying to call him right now while we're talking, but doesn't answer his phone. But I'll call him first thing in the morning and, um, if we make the motion. First thing in the morning and um if we make the motion tonight, uh, and leave off the price. And uh, we'll get it cheaper than five fifty, I'm sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, Councilman Curly, because I'd rather the city just order them and have them delivered anyways, like, they can just. Six thirty events won't even have to deal with that. I think we can just have the city order the porta potties themselves.
Well.
So either they use your vendor or, you know, they're.
If it's cheaper, uh, whatever the, if it's cheaper than what five fifty is, I'll let the city manager know and they can. And I'm almost sure it's TP is the name of the company.
Yeah, because if they're already delivering them out for the cruise, they might, you know, it might even be even less money to deliver two more that day.
Well, they've just put two more on the truck, that's all.
Right, exactly. Okay, um.
Okay.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the event application. Provided that they provide a copy of the event insurance naming the city of East Point. On the uh um in event application or event insurance. And that the city pick up, uh, order two porta johns for Fairlane Park for Saturday, um, June nineteenth.
I support that.
Motion is supported.
Now, Ma- Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh. I'm gonna ask you to allow me to uh read something. Um, I want to read something that I studied up on uh Juneteenth. Um, I I have a feeling a lot of people really don't know a lot of the details. When it happened, why it happened, and what's happening now, so. If you just bear with me, uh, council members, um, let me read this and uh, I want. I I, and the bottom line, I want to get five votes and and the affirmative on this, but. Juneteenth is uh celebrating the emancipation of the American um slave from slavery. Uh, in eighteen sixty-five, Major Granger landed in Galveston, Texas. To inform the slaves that slavery had been abolished. He came, he came with two thousand troops to enforce Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation. Which had gone into effect more than two years before he came to Texas. Uh, one story was told that the reason it took two years for Texas to hear about it is that the messenger was murdered. On his way to Texas. And also many slave owners intentionally withheld information from the slaves. And in eighteen seventy-two, a group of former Texas slaves collected more than eight hundred dollars to buy ten acres. Just near Houston to use a place for the annual celebration. They named it Emancipation Park and it still remains today as a place for the celebration. It was not until nineteen eighty that Texas called June nineteenth a state holiday. As of two thousand twenty, get this, as of two thousand twenty, forty-seven states out of the fifty. Passed legislation recognizing either a state holiday or a day of observation. Hawaii, North Dakota and South Dakota are the only states that did not recognize the holiday. So tonight, I know this looks orange, but it's red. And a common sight is a red color for clothing, for food and drink, like, like red punch. And a red velvet cake. Uh, this was influenced by the fact that color red signifies strength. In some of the African cultures, so I would have. I would encourage everybody to go Sat- Saturday, oh, to to the event. It's a huge event, uh, the governor even today. And I'm gonna screw it up if I try to say, but she made a proclamation, um, as signifying Saturday. Uh, as a day of uh uh honor, so, but I, Madam Mayor, I brought all these details up. Because I'm encouraging to see that we can't get five affirmative votes for this motion.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Anyone else would like to speak on that? Okay, let's get a motion. We did have one already.
There's motion to support already.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, please call the role motion and support, Ms. Walton.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, thank you. The next item of discussion and reconsideration for the Healthy Babies Bright Futures. And Community Health Rally Education Event. This was brought up by Councilwoman, brought back by Councilwoman Moore. To add for reconsideration. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I wanted to bring this back up because um, as the mayor noted, I was sick last week. And wasn't able to attend the meeting. And I wanted to bring it up simply because. I was a person who um, I was reading like one of the rally things of what they actually. Offer, and I know that there were multiple rallies that they can have and choose from different events. Um, but I was looking at the event that they were talking about with the Black Mothers, but um. Breastfeeding Association. And there is a real disparity when it comes to um, black people, black women. Um, African-American, it doesn't matter which way you want to pronounce it, but when it comes to breastfeeding. Um, that if it had not been for my sister, uh, when I was younger. Who breastfed her children and showed me how to do it. Um, told me about the discomfort that I would have as a new mother, uh, told me that that would pass. I wouldn't have breastfed any of my children, but I breastfed all six of them. And with women helping other women and encouraging them is something that. We don't get much of in the black community. I believe that this would be a program that would help encourage not only uh uh mothers, but also fathers. Because the thing is, is that. There is a mortality rate when it comes to black women having children. Um, that we're three to four times more likely to die from the result of a pregnancy. The infant mortality for black community rate is double than a white community. Um, and we all live within the community and we all should be able to help each other to strive to do better and be better. A breastfed baby is a better child, they're healthier, their birth rate. Uh, weight is much better. I actually taught my young daughter to breastfeed. And showed her how, told her she'd get over the pain and she did. And now she has recently, as of last month, had a girlfriend who just had a child that she taught how to breast, how to breastfeed. She actually gave her um, uh, ointment, told her what type to use and how it would help her to heal. In the breastfeeding process. This is something that should not only be shared by one person to one other person to another person. But throughout the whole community with community involvement and not only uh. Individuals, but it should be able to be accessible to everyone. So I wanted to bring this back to the table because we've already. Have received and won the the grant. Why would we not want to help our community and help? To save lives, make children better, uh, healthier, live, uh, you know, less sick. And to help our families in this community with something that has already been, we've been awarded. I I I, I'm not understanding why we would not want to utilize this. This award in the way that it was intended to be used.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm a uh piggyback on it because um. Uh, Council, if I may, just bring up. Let me share my screen again. I'm I'm learning Councilman DeMarco. Okay. Um. Two, okay, say it's bring two. I think I'm doing it right, okay. Okay. Okay, I'm moving it over here. Okay, so this was the original letter, if you all can see, her name is Katya Spear. From, um, she said, good morning, mayors. I just wanted to put in one last plug. For the MIP Small Grant Program in partnership with Healthy Babies Bright Future, we'll be selecting five cities to receive ten thousand dollar grants to identify. And implement strategies to scale and sustain projects that have demonstrated potential for improving children's health and reducing health disparities. It hasn't, has nothing to do with pregnancy or uh anything political. It's about children's health and reducing health disparities. The goal is to scale up, sustain pilot projects that cities launch in response to COVID nineteen challenges. Or to help disparity crisis more broadly. For example, city may propose projects that aim to sustain or expand health, healthy food access. And underserved communities. Target toxic exposure through city purchasing policies, reduce toxic exposure in outdoor air. And reducing toxic exposure in public housing and public spaces. And so what we chose was undeserved communities. And so she sent this, as you can see. Uh, she said one last plug, and so when I saw it, it was last minute. Now, I'm very busy in my uh, in in other things. So when I saw it, I thought it was a chance for us to improve children's health, not just um, in certain groups. But when I worked with Pregnancy Aid at the time, she found out and did the research that African-Americans lack. Uh, the most and in their health and 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 things like that, and so. What I did was I uh worked it to where, let me show you this other screen. So I just wanted to show you the original uh proposal as far as what was brought to me as a mayor and other mayors. The grant was to improve children's health, and since we are a family town, I thought that that made sense. And so let me go to the letter of the proposal, and it was called Level Up East Point Initiative. Now, uh, Pregnancy Aid, which is a resource, it does not teach people to keep their babies. It doesn't tell people uh to get rid of their babies. It's people that already have children to provide a resource. In need as food, diapers and so on and so forth. And that's uh what Pregnancy Aid was, and so I was able to partner up with a local um organization. That has helped me when I had my children and um, not making decisions about what I should or shouldn't do with my child. But to help me at that time. And so when they talked about children's health and she uh actually helped me with this work. So I just want to read a little bit of what Level Up East Point Initiative of twenty twenty-one is. And when we say level up, it's a, it's a a little cool word word that we use, it's step up. Step up East Point Initiative. So during COVID, as of June twenty twenty-one. East Point has had, per the McComb County Health Department statistics, three thousand and forty-three cases of COVID nineteen. At East Point, as throughout the state of Michigan, families have reverted to comfortable habits. That may not be the healthiest when it comes to nutrition and physical movement. Poor eating habits comfort some, and few are finding the energy or incentive to get regular exercise. As a result of individuals lacking personal interaction, mental health has suffered well due to social isolation and anxiety. We propose to incentivize through nominal free door prizes and lunch, the entire East Point community family to level up. On their health initiatives with a focus on nutrition and exercise. We are excited about the opportunity to partner with MSU Extension Program. That will provide education surrounding healthy eating. We will also have a concentrated focus on various exercise sessions for all ages. Working directly with local businesses. We will also offer mental health initiatives through the Joy of Life Foundation. This particular foundation was selected as a partner due to the wealth of services they provide to the community. They are a one-stop shop. We would like to offer a COVID careful community health rally. What is Level Up East Point, everyone is thinking. Level Up East Point is a step towards health and wellness for the entire. East Point family community, focusing on children's improved eating habits and increased exercise. How does Level Up East Point Initiative serve the entire East Point community family? The main focus of the Level Up East Point Initiative would consist of the following below. One, healthy cooking, healthy eating choices by local businesses. By using our our own local urban garden, nutrition classes that are led by Michigan State University Extension. Exercise, we will be providing yoga and kickboxing. We have our own kickboxing company right there on Ten Mile to do demonstrations. And we did a yoga class um at East Point uh two years ago downtown at DDA, and we will be using her as well. We also will provide mental health training and classes and things, how to deal with mental health and uh other um. Health disparities that we can talk about there and uh with that person who does the training. And talk about that, how to deal with that and what to do. Peer support, parenting classes and health literature. Free prizes will be available to all that attend the sessions. All attendees will receive a free T-shirt and other swag. Like cups and clothing and things like that while they last. Level Up East Point Initiative will be located at Spindler Park. The large open venue is community and kid friendly. Level Up East Point Initiative will take place in the fall, the date and time to be determined based on the approval of council. Level Up East Point Initiative will have several local um restaurants to be on hand to provide a taste of their cuisine. Level Up East Point Initiative will have several local businesses in attendance. And we have requested that the local grocery store partner up with Level Up East Point Initiative and provide all the children that attend a small fruit snack. I'm just going to go back. So that was. I believe I talked with Mayor Pro Tem and just bringing it together. And so uh Pregnancy Aid said they will step back if there was a a a barrier in continuing, you know, uh. With this grant, because they know that in their heart that they feel like this was an initiative to level up the whole community. Not just about, you know, uh, certain things. And um, so they even stepped back to say, we don't want to stop you from getting this ten thousand dollars if our name is a part of it. But um, again, what Councilwoman uh Moore sta- stated was, we initially um went for it. When they said it was a barrier in certain uh groups and that we want to not only service the whole community. But also pay attention to groups in our community that are underserved. And that's what we've been doing since the whole uh COVID nineteen, which you have noticed that a lot of African-Americans. Um, have passed away uh due to the health disparities in the community. And we were just trying to level up and step up and do something about it with this initiative here. Um, we go back and see. Okay. And so we wanna, we put no cost because we're hoping that we can get that, no cost by the council, the janitorial service. No cost, hopefully, um, we had that already at Spindler Park. Uh, Lysol and Love's, no cost, hopefully the uh council, if this is approved, can provide that. Uh, beverages, bottled water, a hundred dollars, marketing signage, advertisement, big signs. Um, news article and things like that, invite gifts, two thousand dollars. Family education training from Joy of Life Foundation, she's gonna provide material training. We're gonna do uh small classes and also do trainings, and people have to stay for the class in order to get a a gift. To make sure that they're actually learning and they receive the information. Event coordinator, we will be using a local company right here in the city of East Point, which the recre- recreation par- uh partners up with. And it's also a local vendor here uh with the Recreation Department, and they're gonna prepare the tables, et cetera, balloons. They're gonna provide the cleaning, um, the food, and also, which will be uh from shish kebab. We already priced that, so that's in the price as well. And also uh tents and et cetera, which totals out to ten thousand dollars. And we was hoping if the cost uh is less than what we have. Uh, came up with to give the rest of the cost to the Recreation Department for the underserved children that want to go to the programs. At the Recreation Department and cannot afford the summer programs or any other programs uh as far as health and wellness. And so I just wanted to show you. Uh. Certain things that uh I was supposed to give you. I was working on this last night and some other updates. So I can bring it more together, because I never want people to see, and I know Councilwoman Moore and all the council agree. That we uh particularly um go for one group of people or favor one group of people here in the city of East Point. But it is our job as elected leaders in a community to know who is underserved and make sure that we provide that. So we can all sit at the table and uh for equality and peace. In order to do that, we have to identify. Who's not getting what and provide that resource. And so that was what Level Up East Point was initially about. Is to make sure that we have a healthy community and um. That we provide a service to those that have been served and those that, and pay close attention to underserved uh residences. Under, you know, underserved residents as well. And those that, and pay close attention to underserved uh, residents as, under, you know, underserved residents as well. So um, I don't know if council want to go um, speak on this a little bit. I'm gonna go back and um, I don't know how to get back to the shares, somebody can. Okay.
Um, so the grant itself, would it be, would, would it go to East, is it going to East Point directly? Or does it going through this Pregnancy Aid group that applied for the grant? That's where my confusion is. The city didn't apply for the grant, so I don't know how the city would get the money from the grant if the city isn't the one who applied for it.
No, I, I applied for it. Only the mayor could apply for the grant on behalf of the city. Yeah, we the only one who can take the, like, just for, like, our Director of Public Safety. If he applies for a grant, he's doing it on behalf of the city. Uh, it was a, it was a mayor initiative for the mayor to apply for a grant for the city. And so the money comes to us at um, for the idea, like I said, I had like two days to put this together. It was very last minute. And um, I'm, I'm very shocked that we got approved for two days of, you know, uh, brainstorming, so. So the check will go to, to the city and we would disperse it and, and put it together. And um. So initially, it was uh, partnering up with just a, a local uh, organization that deals with children. And we don't have too many of those and families, because Pregnancy Aid deals with uh, children, families and et cetera. They do a, all around and resources. So I know a lot of people get confused because it is a, uh, near that clinic and it has nothing to do with that clinic. And so like I said, me being the mother myself, yeah, at the time I have my children, they didn't, I didn't go for them for um. Helping, telling, asking them to keep or uh, keep my baby or what, whether I should get rid of it. It was a place where I learned um, about breastfeeding. I learned about, you know. Uh, doing certain things for my child and learned about being a better, how to be a new mom. I learned about healthy eating. I learned about so many different things that, you know, and my husband, he went to, um, he didn't change the baby, so well, he almost made the baby fall off. So I'm not gonna bring that up anymore. But uh, but it was like a family thing. And so uh. It was, it, it did a lot of things for families and, and so on and so forth. So I thought it was a good idea to um, go back to what I know. And plus it came back to East Point and, and partnered with them. And so I understand the concerns of council. So and me, um, the lady of Pregnancy Aid, uh, thought about those concerns and which were valid concerns and came back. And to let you know that they, they said we'll step back because we want this grant to be approved. Um, and again, I just wanted to show you all this.
Madam Mayor, if I may too really quick, I have one more question.
Okay.
So did city administration at all review this grant application before you applied for it?
No, it was two days. And like I said, it was two days. We, I think she got done. I think that came on a Wednesday. She did it last minute on the Friday.
Okay.
And I think I probably turned it on on Saturday. Or late Friday night, because it was due on a, probably a Friday and I turned it on the Friday night. Like I said, I didn't even think it was going to get approved. But I know before, once I put it in, I think that next council meeting, I brought it to council's attention, that I did apply. And then we had Pregnancy Aid as a guest and we talked about this Level Up East Point Initiative. And, and hopefully if approval can council um, approve the, prove the grant.
Uh, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, well, I think, so this is the first time I heard anything you were just talking about just now. And I didn't know until now that you had put in for this grant. And I'm, I'm confused also because uh, coming into this meeting, I saw the, the East Sider had said that this. This grant would not go directly through the city, but would go through the Pregnancy Aid nonprofit. You know, it says they'll host an event to provide resources and education to parents and families in the East Point area. And I guess it's kind of just like the same ideas I was saying with, you know, the Red Cross or other philanthropies. They, uh, uh, you know, can't they just accept this money and do the event themselves? Like, why does the city need to um, be involved in the East Sider? It says they're going to receive the money.
And I would, uh, if I may, uh, say something on that. I called them, the, the, the healthy babies, um, the company, well, the, the organization reached out and I said, okay. Council is not feeling, you know, feeling, you know, I told you, told them how you all felt. And they said, okay, well, it's possible we can give it to Pregnancy Aid, but they said no. Because the title of it is Mayor's Initiative for the City. So it's not Monique Owens Initiative, it's not um, Pregnancy Aid's Initiative. This was on behalf of overseeing what goes on in the city and the thoughts of the residents and COVID. And so this idea is something that all cities go through. So at, and as a city, we have, you know, just last year, we were like the main city in McComb County that dealt with COVID nineteen. We were a hotspot. And so when a grant comes in, in, in and says, let's help with the health disparities during COVID. Which we all don't eat that much uh, too good already, but during COVID, we were um. We wasn't able to go work out. We wasn't able, especially our children. A lot of our children have, had, had mental health problems. They weren't able to go exercise. It wasn't, you know, eating healthy as they should, especially certain groups of people. And so this is predominantly what this grant was about. It wasn't about the mayor, it was, or, you know, it was about a community. It was about a city coming together and saying, these are the, the issues that we, we face all throughout the United States. You know, how can we help? And how can we especially help the undeserved communities? And so. In two days, like I said, and last minute seeing that, I just was proactive in applying for that grant. Now, it's up to council to not receive it, but you know, like I said, I just feel like, you know, we always, you know, if I see a grant. Just being proactive and saying, these are the needs. And like I said, the research says it itself. McComb County Health Department, our statistics, and we have, uh, East Point has changed dramatically. We have more in the census count and SEMCOG has said that we have more African Americans than we had ten years ago. And so when we, uh, when our um, communities change, and also during a pandemic. Those communities might be needing more resources than the next. And so for this grant to be won by not the mayor, um, on the mayor's behalf, but this is a city. Um, uh, problem, it's a United States problem. And so I was being proactive on that.
Here, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, well, I read the article from the East Sider and there was a couple of items that was wrong in there, so, you know. Just because it was in the East Sider doesn't mean it was a hundred percent uh, correct. And another thing, I do see where my son, when, when school stopped and he couldn't go to classes anymore. There was a lot of mental challenge for him. Um, due to COVID, he did gain weight like most people did during COVID. Um, and I just see that this grant is, is a helpful grant to the whole entire community. Uh, is it that the city council doesn't want this money?
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I agree with everything that you and Ms. Moore are saying totally a hundred percent. My biggest concern is the fact that we don't, we don't have an. We don't have a copy of the event application really. And we also don't have like, none of our administration looked over like any of this. So I can't even like ask for like a legal, like opinion on the grant or anything like that on. Because none of that, no, no one from administration looked over this before we applied for it. And that's kind of concerning to me. That, I don't know if there's, is, do we, you know, if we have to match anything, are we? This, I, I, there's so many, I'm just not sure. I, I, I don't know if city administration has a recommendation for us on this. Or not?
Um, Ms. Albright.
From a legal standpoint, Madam Mayor, I don't have anything further to add. I, I don't know if uh, Finance Director or the Assistant City Manager. Uh, wishes to say anything or, or perhaps wait for input from Ms. Doom.
I mean, I can jump in. Again, like you said, Councilmember Lucino, we haven't gotten anything other than um, what mayor has provided to review. Um, so if we had more information, um, Elke and I um, could definitely review um, the information and then give a formal recommendation.
Now, e- even if we don't use this grant this time, we also have the option of, we already have it pre-made for next time. If we apply next time. So, but just FYI, she said if it doesn't get approval today, it goes back on Friday. So um. Let me see. I'm trying to show you the initial, because it, it wasn't everything. Let me share my screen again. A lot of these grants are by application. It's about putting it together and. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen again. Okay, you guys work with me. Okay. Oh, Lord, okay. All right. Okay, let me try this again, you all. Be patient with the mayor. Okay. Okay, I think I'm, okay. Can you all see the screen?
No.
No?
Okay.
Screen two, okay, share. Okay, I'm getting there, Councilmember Monica. Okay, so this was the mayor's, uh, the mayor's innovation program. The mayor's office in the city of East Point is excited to partner with the mayor's innovation program and Healthy Babies Bright Futures on this. Project to bring health awareness to our community. This event will take place in one of our city parks sponsored by the city of East Point following CDC guidelines. In which you create a family-friendly environment where pregnant mothers and women with children can have fun while learning. We will be honored to be granted an award to show our commitment and breaking down barriers and health disparities for our children.
What you're reading, uh, Mayor.
Can you see it?
No, we see, when we see Microsoft Word.
Oh, really?
Can't see it.
No?
Yeah.
We just see the.
We're seeing the Level Up East Point Initiative twenty twenty one, what you had up earlier, but we're not seeing what you're reading right now.
Hmm.
Think you can drag it over to that same screen.
Can you see now?
It's just, oh, okay.
Can you guys see it now?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't, okay, it's three screens in here, so. Okay, the mayor's office in the city, in the city of East Point is excited to partner with Mayor's Innovation Program. And Healthy Babies Bright Futures on this project to bring health awareness to our community. This event will take place in one of our city parks sponsored by the city of East Point following CDC guidelines. In which you create a family-friendly environment where pregnant mothers and women with children can have fun while learning. We will be honored to be granted an award to show our commitment and breaking down barriers and health disparities for our children. In addition to this letter, I have provided budgets for local community leaders who specialize in pregnant women, resources, education. And services who we have partnered up with in the past with local events to also be a service in this new partnership with your organization. So I wasn't able, it wasn't an application, it was. Write something up that, you know, that follow what they were looking for. So a lot of these grants are um, applications. They're um, initiatives that. Cities are um, are working towards. And so I just wrote a letter and Pregnancy Aid wrote a letter too. And talked about leveling up and stepping up the health and wellness of the community. And so. It was several communities. I'll share this with you. I'm gonna share this screen one more time.
There, I, I, I just don't, I don't understand this for sure well enough to vote in favor of it.
Okay. Well, like I said, all that, that was the um, media release. So other cities that won was Grand Rapids, Michigan. Madison, Wisconsin, Pine Bluff, San Rafael, California. So it was different. So we were one out of the five. And like I said, I can send this.
So, Madam Mayor. If we were re- to receive this. Is there anything that we would have to pay for an event? Or would it all come out of the ten thousand?
Everything comes out to ten thousand dollars. There's no matching or anything like that. They just want, they want to make sure it's used for health disparities in a community. Surrounding uh, COVID nineteen.
Okay.
So again, like I said, if it's not approved tonight, we also can use this as a stepping stone. For applying for another grant in the future. But that grant will be going back on Friday. And it was, and, and Pregnancy Aid, I want to say thank you to Pregnancy Aid as well, because they tried. It was my first time meeting her and um, she really worked and a couple other people worked to really uh, bridge the gap. And getting us this money. And some of these people don't live in East Point. So um, so thank you for all the hard work for helping me try to get this money um, for the city. And um, last minute. So I always want to make sure that people are thanked. But yeah, so we always can use this moving forward. And we can like, kind of, you know, change a little bit here and there for the next round.
It's, Madam Mayor, if I may. So to my understanding, there's free money to help the community. And it sounds like we're rejecting it as a whole. That, I mean, I, I, I don't get that. I don't understand. Um. In all my years, I mean. To, to get the free money to actually help the community and we don't have to come out of pocket for anything. And we turn it down. I, I just don't, I don't understand that. I, I, I don't get it. That's my comment.
Anybody else want to comment? Okay, so um, and so in the newspaper, they were somewhat right. But at the same time, once we found out that Pregnancy Aid wasn't going to get it. It was a uh, a letdown for not only uh, the community and residents. Councilwoman uh, Moore wasn't here and she's, she didn't understand why I was uh, let down and um. Passed down too. So that's why she was able, thank you for bringing it back up. So, but again, we have something to work on for next year.
I don't know. I want to put a motion on the table.
Okay.
I want to put a motion on the table that we accept and receive the grant. I mean, there's nothing written up on it. We, uh, accept and receive the grant um, of ten thousand dollars. For the uh, the Healthy Babies Bright Future Grant that was awarded to us.
Support. Motion of support, please call the row.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino. I think you're muted.
Yeah, so sorry about that. I, I just really wish administration could have reviewed everything beforehand and gave us a recommendation. So right now, I just, I don't feel comfortable with voting yes until they had a chance to like review everything, including like the initial, like. The correspondence that was reached out to the mayor before she even applied, to see if there was like any strings attached or that. So at this time, I'm gonna vote no.
Okay.
Councilmember Curly.
No.
Councilmember DeMarco.
No.
Okay, well, thank you, Healthy Babies Bright Futures, and also the community for helping with this. But now we have something that we can work towards. And I think it's another grant coming out for obesity and things like that. So we're working for that too in the community. So moving right along. To. Payrolls and bills, council.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of one million nine hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents.
Support.
Motion of support, please call the row.
Councilmember Lucino.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is hearing of the public. If you didn't get to speak in the first hearing of the public, you have a chance to speak in the second hearing of the public. You get three minutes. We ask you to be respectful and we are concerned about what you're concerned about. So uh, please, Ms. Walton, open the. Ms. Walton, open the second hearing of the public.
Next, Mayor, um, Dennis would like to speak.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. I just want to add that there's no proof that an indoor building versus a tent is more safe during fireworks. And second, this ordinance was written by a, uh, Roseville Senator for a Roseville Fireworks Store to eliminate all the competitions. All this is, this ordinance was made for. And the other thing is, we clean up our tents. Our landlords will not let us back if we do not clean up the mess. And I think the solution to this is not getting rid of them, but raising your fee from $50, which I paid this year, maybe consider raising it to 500. The state charges us 1,000 for our license. So, I think raising your fee may be a solution to this. But I, I'd like to see this shot down and everybody work together and make everybody happy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, please?
Mayor, Michael LaPage would like to speak next.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
I wanted to ask a quick question about the marijuana zoning regarding the areas specifically pertaining to whether or not if a, if a business property falls within the zoned area, uh, that is approved on the ultimate map and it complies with all the criteria regarding any distance from schools, churches, things like that. If there's any, uh, chance that a specific building would not be included as one of the approved buildings. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So, we represent a client who has a building already within the city and is interested in getting licensed. Um, there's some uncertainty whether he, he was within the zoned area for the business district where it will be approved. But from my understanding, it sounds like there will be specific buildings, uh, or parcels that are approved. My question is, is if, if a property falls within the zoned, uh, approved area for the marijuana establishments, if there's any possibility that a building will not be included in an approved list if it meets all criteria and it falls within the zone.
Thank you. We don't, um, answer too many questions. Do you want to hear another public? Mr. Albright, did you get that question?
Madam Mayor, I did get the question. I would recommend, uh, that Mr. LaPage, uh, contact, uh, uh, city administration, specifically Ms. Holman tomorrow. Uh, and I would also be happy to participate in the telephone conversation or meeting.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, anyone else would like to speak at this time?
Mayor, Gary Sasek would like to speak next.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Gary Sasek, East Point resident. I'm a little concerned. I support Juneteenth. I support Black History Month. I support Pride Month. I support every organization within this city. But what I watched tonight really distresses me a little bit. And here's why. We have a person that came before the council with an idea and she presented it. She was told that there were flaws in her application and she went back. The crew, the Gracit crews came with an application and we only have a cruise going on this weekend because of the fact that there was miscommunication and it passed by a sleep mar, slim margin. The other issue about that is that same commission, committee came back to you saying to have a better understanding of what COVID restrictions will be. I, we would like to move the date to September. It was voted three to two against that. They paid their $75 fee in application in a timely manner. The Juneteenth application was submitted back in May. It was a video presentation. She was told that there were things that needed to be corrected. Department heads made decisions that said that it wasn't feasible to have at City Hall and it was moved to Fairlane Park. That's fine. She still had issues with the application not being proper. Here we are tonight, a blanket approval for this. The city's picking up her $75 fee. The Ease Community Group that's sponsoring a monument for this city to promote unity within the community is having a charity car show tomorrow. We did our application in a timely manner. We paid our $75 fee. Are some of these groups that have followed all of the protocols that the city has dictated going to get a refund on their application fees? Why should one group be favored more than another group when it's all benefiting the community? Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. Um, anyone else would like to speak?
Mayor, um, Eddie and Mercy would like to speak next.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, well, Mayor Owens, um, you know, you, you said as you opened up, um, the hearing of the public that, you know, you and the council are interested and concerned about what, um, concerns us. And this has been at least a good month now that I have not had any detailed response in what is being done in regards to this nuisance tenant being held accountable. Her trash continues to overflow every week. I've sent pictures of the garbage cans overflowing with trash. Winds up in my backyard, winds up in my front yard. There's the issue with, um, blasting stereos and this tree branch has been behind the garage for now a year. Code enforcement has known about this since March of this year. And in the agenda, there's, you know, all of these different ordinances that you want to pass, but you're not even enforcing the ordinances that are on the book. Uh, this just makes no sense whatsoever. We're paying taxes as homeowners. You're public servants, okay? And when there's a problem, we are going to bring these problems to you. And in regards to criticism, that goes with the territory. That's a part of democracy, okay? And it is covered under the First Amendment that citizens have the right to criticize their government without fear of reprisal. Okay, so we get to redress our grievances and we should not be in fear of retaliation or reprisal. But we also should not have to be putting up with this blatant lack of action. Nothing is being done. This goes on every week and no one is taking this seriously. This, this just speaks volumes of a local government behaving so dysfunctionally. There are ordinances to enforce. They need to be enforced, not ignored. And you need to listen to your residents. This can't be about, you know, all these events and let's do this and, you know, family-focused event. Yeah, that's great. But the thing is, is there are so many problems going on in East Point being overlooked. There's a lot of violence. There's a lot.
Time is up, ma'am.
There's all kinds of problems.
Eddie and Mercy, time is up. Thank you so much. Um, next, please.
Mayor, uh, Jack Barry would like to speak next.
Okay, sounds good. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Jack Barry. Uh, I've owned a property in the City of East Point, uh, since 2004. And, uh, earlier, uh, Mike, uh, LaPage mentioned something about the medical marijuana, uh, ordinance. And I actually had a issue with that too. In section 10, 230, it states that the clerk shall reject any application that proposes a location on a parcel that is not approved parcel in the official map that's going to be presented. Now, if a property is not on that map, does that dis, from what this, this, uh, ordinance says that they could reject the application? Now, I don't know if the city really wants to be liable for, I, I think it'd be a good idea to take that section out of the ordinance or something. It's just a suggestion in the city council, so you guys would have less liability because I'm not sure of the company that you guys hired to do the map is going to get all the locations correctly. What if they miss one? And then that person can't apply. And, uh, that's my question. I don't know. I know you guys don't answer many questions in this forum, but, uh, I just figured to put that out there since I meant, I heard about it earlier.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Albright, you'll get back with that person, these two, um, business owners, I believe.
Madam Mayor, my, my suggestion to Mr. Barry would be the same, uh, suggestion that I made to Mr. LaPage earlier would be to simply contact city administration, specifically, uh, Ms. Holman. And I would be happy to participate in that, uh, that meeting, whether it's held in a conference or in person over at City Hall.
I mean, I don't know when the map is coming out, uh, Mr. Albright, but I did try contacting Ms. Holman over two weeks ago. Um, I have not got information. I did speak to you regarding it, but, uh, that's as far as it's been. Now, it's basically where I'm waiting to see if I'm going to be on the map or not. Basically, uh, waiting on if the company is competent enough that you guys hired to be accurate enough to have everybody that should be on the map, on the map. Um, I don't know how much more time, uh, I've left messages to both companies and, uh, city council and I haven't got much of a response. Not city council, I'm sorry, but, uh, city manager.
Um, you can contact also, uh, our city manager is out in training. So, if you can contact, um, our assistant city manager, Ms. Walton. Ms. Walton, in the chat, can you put in details of how to contact you? Also, as well as Mr. Albright. And also details on how to contact our economic developer for these two gentlemen. So, please, anybody else that's, uh, want to speak on this and has the same issues, please get that information in the chat. Thank you. Um.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, Mayor, Mrs. Trace would like to speak next.
Good evening.
Good evening, um, Mrs. Trace, East Point. Um, I was glad they voted down the pregnancy idea. We have WIC here and we also have the, um, Gina House and they do everything. And how long will that $10,000 last? Not long at all. You know, um, they, they provide the same services through WIC and all year round, 24/7. Um, my other issue was, you guys have brought to the table about code enforcement working on the weekends. And we have yet to see them work. We've never heard anything back on it. And I actually had to call Ms. Walton this morning about an issue. Um, I feel like if I have to pay for a permit to do something at my home, that everybody should be paying. And I, and I noticed that a lot of people are doing things on the weekends and they're getting away with it because nobody's checking. Thank you for your time and I would like to get a response to that because it's been brought in front of city council many times.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Ms. Mary Hall-Raiford would like to speak next.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, good evening again, Mary Hall-Raiford. Um, political activist, community advocate, educated black woman, believes in peace, harmony, and unity. I've listened to, um, everything that was said, but before I go much further, let me commend everyone on the difference in tone tonight. I really appreciated that. I'm sure everyone else who was listening appreciated a more collaborative tone, um, with everyone. But it seems to me that on one hand, you're pushing assistance for black families. On the other hand, you're ignoring everyone else. I don't understand how we can be a family town if in fact, we are not interested in supporting and promoting everyone in it. That has, that's a problem for me. I support the, the, um, the LGBT community, um, the Latina community, the Muslim community, uh, whatever religious faith someone has. And to make distinctions where there is no need to is an issue for me. And I would sincerely hope that at some point in time, that East Point would truly become the family town that that banner on City Hall displays so prominently. That's important. We cannot be a family if we're always making distinctions. We have to become as one in order to be a family. And I would really love to live long enough to see that happen in East Point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
Hello.
Good evening.
Yeah, hi, Gary Myron, East Point. Um, the social district, I think it's a good idea. And, um, the farmer's market, that's a good idea because there's nothing really here for a farmer market. And, um, so I support it. Um, Cardi, nice haircut. And one more thing is, how do you get the hand in your box? You know, to get your turn.
Uh, hit reactions.
Huh?
There's a reactions at the bottom and then it says raise hand.
Oh, right, okay. Got it. Thank you. And that's all.
Thank you.
Yep, have a good day.
You too. It's always a pleasant when you speak. Um, anyone else?
Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised.
Yes, ma'am. Am I able to speak?
Oh, yes. Hi, how are you?
I'm wonderful. How is everyone this evening?
Good. Please, um, state your name.
Wonderful. Uh, this is Ms. Dubois. Actually, I was in on the last meeting on June the first. And, um, I'm a proud, uh, I hail from Louisiana from the south. And, uh, is it okay if I speak?
Yes, I, I timed you. Go, go ahead. Since you don't, uh, know the process right now, how we do things, um, it's three minutes and I'll start when you're ready.
Uh, yes, ma'am. I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, um, for those of you who weren't at the last meeting, uh, I'm an equality advocate, uh, Dubois. And, uh, I was very glad to hear everyone, uh, or hear, uh, one of the council members give some, uh, background on Juneteenth especially. Uh, that's something that's near and dear to my heart, hailing from the south. And I actually have completed the march to Washington DC uh, to make Juneteenth a federal holiday. So, I was actually very glad to hear that you all are aware of the actual history of it originating actually in Texas, in the south. So, I was glad to hear that. Um, the other point of business is, I'm wanting to know, and I would like a response to this, uh, because I believe I deserve this. Um, I'm wanting to know what is going on with the Cat Pack Day proclamation. I haven't heard anything about it. And I know that when the mayor and I, uh, had a conversation on the first, she told me she would be issuing the proclamation. And then I graciously did attend the, the council meeting, uh, as the mayor said, so that it could be issued or read or proclaimed or what have you. And, um, you know, then it was, I was told that you guys would do it on the 15th. Well, today is the 15th and I have not heard anything about, um, the Cat Pack Day proclamation. So, naturally, my time is quite valuable. Um, and, uh, I do believe that I am due, uh, some type of explanation. Uh, I did ask the mayor on the first if there was a process to this. And she stated that, uh, as we went through the proclamation, she did a bit. She stated she would be issuing that. And so, um, you know, that is really, uh, what, uh, what I'm wondering, where, where is the proclamation? I was not told there was a vote needed or, or anything. And, um, again, I've worked with mayors, governors, and then issued proclamations all around the nation. And so, when she said there was no process and the proclamation would be issued, I had no reason to not think that, um, that is what would occur. So, if someone would please address that because again, uh, my time is quite valuable and, uh, I don't like for it to be wasted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
No, Mayor. Not seeing any hands raised, uh, and there's nothing in the chat.
Okay, the second hearing of the public is now closed. I want to thank everyone who attended and spoke. Um, what you say is somewhat valuable. It is respectful and, and so on and so forth. Um, moving along to Mayor and Council report, starting with Councilman DeMonaco.
Thanks, Mayor. And, uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Myron. I did cut about nine inches of hair off. My head, my head. My head, my head's a lot lighter now. Thanks for unnoticing. Um, but yeah, so glad COVID is letting up and I'm glad, uh, people will be able to attend, uh, the Grashik cruise this weekend. I just wanted to comment real quick, of course, um, back when, you know, I was commenting on it a little today about, uh, approving the special event application. At the time, I personally, you know, uh, nobody knew what was going to be going on with COVID. So I do plan on taking part in the cruise because of how things are going now. I've been, you know, a little more comfortable out in public. So, um, I just wanted to, uh, say that and I just hope everything goes for you well, Harvey, and, uh, the, the cruise committee, uh, now that, um, you know, it is much safer to be outside and that's a recommendation, uh, that people can be outside even without masks and that sort of thing. So looking forward to that and of course, the Juneteenth event also then on Saturday. And if maybe I missed something in the motion, I didn't think part of the motion was to cover the special event application, but just to make it nice and easy, um, so the city's not covering it like Mr. Sasek said. I'll donate the seventy-five bucks if we did agree to cover that instead of the city covering it. Uh, but I didn't think that was part of the motion. Um, but just to make it nice and easy, let's just do it that way. And, um, I'd be happy to, uh, happy to cover that and hope that event goes, uh, really well on Saturday. And of course, um, you know, with COVID being gone, uh, you know, hopefully being gone soon, but, you know, safe enough to be outside and that sort of thing. Uh, Happy Pride Month, you know, I'm going to have, I've got a few things to say today, so sorry. Um, on Sunday, was able to hang out and park in, uh, Sterling Heights, uh, with a group called Macomb County Pride. Um, and that was a very nice event. It was great to see, um, there was a lot of kids of like parents there and they were all supportive of each other. Uh, very nice to see. And then, of course, uh, my wife, Alyssa, was, um, hearing the public talking about the flag that we had over by Spindler Park. Um, glad she was able to talk about that and hopefully, you know, um, this ends with the vandalism of, of city property like she said. Um, and let's see, what else? Um, everyone have a wonderful Father's Day weekend, this upcoming weekend and a couple of weekends after that, Independence Day. And, um, the young lady talking about K-Pac Day, if I'm talking about that, I, I guess I just, I thought it'd be on the agenda and didn't see it, so that was all. Um, and I think that was everything. I was trying to, uh, hit everyone that, uh, talked at hearing the public for a response. I think, uh, city admins covering a lot of those other ones. Hopefully everyone's taken care of and I think this meeting, uh, went a little faster than we thought it would so far. So, um, I think that's all I had in my notes here. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That wasn't bad, Mr. Monaco. Councilman, Councilman Curly.
I have nothing tonight, ma'am.
Okay, Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, I wanted to address something that was spoken up about. Um, just because I, uh, include my race and things doesn't mean that I exclude anyone because I would never do such a thing. Um, my grandkids, I wouldn't exclude them for the world. Love them dearly. They're mixed. So there is no exclusion in anything that I say. It's just being, um, wanting to be included with everything equally. Um, also, when it comes to Pride Month, my son and his partner are very, very active in it, whom I love dearly. So just because a certain vote, a person votes a certain way, doesn't mean that they're against the item. It just means that we all have our own opinion of what we feel. I don't want to tread on anybody else's opinion or anyone else's, um, um, way that, you know, they want to do things. I would never do such a thing like that. But I also wouldn't want anybody to tread on lines. So we should always be able to, um, speak our minds without it being said that we are doing something, uh, nefarious because that is not my intent whatsoever at all. Um, also, um, I would like to donate the $200 for the, um, the insurance because I am happy and can't wait for the event of June tenth to come. So I would like to donate the $200 so that they can have their, um, insurance and I'll bring that tomorrow. Thank you. That's all.
Councilwoman. Councilwoman Lucito, our mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so a couple of things. Um, first of all, to remind everyone that tomorrow Eze's having their car show at the VFW Hall in Nine Mile. I believe the event starts at three PM. I hope everyone makes it out to support them. I know they've been really trying to work hard to raise money for the Unity sculpture that they want to put up in Kennedy Park. Also, there's a public safety meeting at Kennedy Park tomorrow at six PM. I hope everyone has a chance to stop by there, hear what the director has to say. Um, and I want to thank the officers that came out to my neighborhood watch meeting last week. They did an excellent job like they always do. Um, we always have a really great meeting, very informative. So they, they always do a fantastic job in assisting us with that. Um, I'd also like to take a moment to thank Mr. Marucci for helping me retrieve the pieces from the bride flag when it was vandalized last Wednesday. And I do plead with the, the community to please just leave it alone. It's, it's not, it's not hurting anyone. I understand if you don't agree with it, that's completely fine and that's your choice. You don't have to look at it. There is a lot of things that happen in the community that people may not agree with, but it doesn't mean you have to vandalize them. So with that said, I hope I see everyone out at the cruise this weekend. And following the cruise, hopefully everyone has a chance to stop by the Juneteenth event at Kepsall. And I think that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, our Boys and Girls Club visioning session was last Thursday. It was canceled for emergency purposes, but it will be ongoing this Thursday. And I believe that council has shared that link or if we didn't, again, we will do it again on our Facebook and our social media, so you can RSVP and find out what's going on and how you can be a part of having a say in what the Boys and Girls Club look like or, uh, what you think it should be. Also, you know, ask your children, grandchildren, and so forth to be a part of that because it is for the children. You want to know what they think, how they feel, and what they want, you know? Um, also, uh, the young lady, Mr. Dubois, with, uh, K-Pac Day, it was supposed to be on this agenda. Uh, if you, uh, I believe you stayed on the whole time. Council was supposed to review it and it was supposed to be shared with them before, uh, we, uh, okayed it. And so that was something that, um, was supposed to be shared with council or council was supposed to read it before we, uh, shared that with the public as well. And so, I mean, what you're standing for is not, um, is, is year round. So we, uh, Mr. Gassen, if you can put that on the next agenda. It was supposed to be on this agenda, you are correct, and our apologies. But, uh, what you're fighting for, for, uh, so, I mean, uh, rights, peace, and things like that, it's just not a, a certain day, that's every day. But, um, I understand you want, uh, a proclamation, we'll, we'll do that. And as a mayor, I do what I say I'm going to do and I stand on that. Just because we forget and we're human, that doesn't mean that we don't do what we say. We make mistakes and I'm that mayor that makes mistakes. So I apologize about that and we'll get that back up. And also, I'm excited about Juneteenth Grashik Cruise. At the time, we were, uh, had a lot of, uh, stipulations with COVID. So I would, I did turn it down. And, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Moore probably can agree with me and Councilman DeMonico due to the, those, uh, stipulations. That's why we turned it down and wasn't, we were for and against it for so many different reasons. And so, um, I'm glad council will be able to make it. I have to see if I'm going to make it since we did a collaboration with another city. I want to make sure I, I stand on what I say and being somewhere and representing East Point. And that's why I'm glad we, I have a mayor pro tem, so if I can't make everything, she, she helps me out a lot, which she has been doing lately. I appreciate that. And I'm so excited about Juneteenth. This is our first one in the city of East Point. And I believe, I didn't think we, uh, showed favoritism depending on groups of people here. I think it was just a young lady that wanted to see something that never has been seen in the city of East Point and she wanted some help with that. And so I think that was really what it was about, uh, giving the, uh, $75 is because we want to, uh, help our youth to be, uh, to express themselves and to do something, and she's been doing. Me and her have been working really hard and, uh, even though I gave her the resources, even though I told her who's the sponsor, she's been writing all these letters by herself. She's been doing everything by herself and I get it because I do a lot of things for the city by myself and it's a lot of hard work. And, you know, for it to be so, um, I'm going to say petty, because I'm going to say it. To be petty about $75, it shows that we need a lot of growth in this city. For this young lady who just graduated and started her own business and taking out her time to do a city event, that's huge and I congratulate her. I do. And we, um, we got a long way to go, especially we're older than her and we're her elders. We need to help her do something that hasn't been done and she looked up to us to do that. And so those who, uh, paved the way, the sponsors and the council that's helping her, thank you for doing that. I think I, I did, I've, I've been starting with her since day one, so, um, I gotta applaud her. Our, our, our youth and our children are our future and that's why I did the, the $10,000 grant. I heard somebody said about WIC and certain resources. I don't depend all the way on just the same type of resources. And that is why we're stuck in certain places in this community because we're stuck on the same resources, the same grants and the same, and we're not proactive. We don't partner with anybody. We don't, um, partner with different cities, different states most of the time and outside of the country. And so that's going to, uh, and now this $10,000 grant is going to other communities because we're so stuck and we are, are bringing it back up petty at times. And so saying that, um, going back to saying we pick and choose who we, who we do things for. We didn't choose black mothers. It was a Caucasian lady that chose it. It wasn't no one black. And so this woman who's Caucasian, who's wealthy, saw the disparity. Saw something that is in a community and wanted to help and that's huge. So it's not a black thing, it's not a white thing, an Asian thing, it's a family thing. And if we're going to be East Point, not the past East Point, I'm talking about the right now East Point. We have to stop being petty. And I think a lot of times we so petty on $75, really? $75. That group should have gave her $75 if you're talking about equality. You should have gave it to her. If we talking about resources, $10,000 is a resource to help the, the babies and the families and the children here of all ages and all races. And this lady, of course, again, who's Caucasian, saw disparity and she wrote the grant, not Mayor Owens, because I'm black. When I got elected, black people, white people, Asians, and all type of races voted for me. So I stand for all people. So let's make that clear. But if I see a disparity in a certain group, whether it's black, white, Asian, Cal Dan, I help that group and lift them up to make sure they are treated fair and have the quality of life that all people should have. And that's the mayor I am. So saying that, moving right along, we're going to go into closed session. I want to thank everybody for coming to this meeting. And I really feel like we got a lot of work to do as a community, as the elderly, as people watching us because some of us need to pull back, even myself. Some of you guys are older than me, seen a lot, have a lot of experience. Pull back and give back to our youth and our leaders and help us to lead and stop being petty. So we have wanted to close session to collective bargaining pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two sixty. And we're also going to close session for our city attorney's annual review. Council? Or motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Thank you. Going to closed session. If you would like to stay after to see us say bye to you, you're welcome to stay. So thank you all who participated in the meeting. Have a good night and happy Father's Day.
Madam Mayor, can, can we have five minutes to go to the bathroom?
Can I have two minutes?
Yes.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes, ten minutes, yes. Yes, ma'am. Exactly. Okay, we're back at open session once, uh, Councilman DeMonico lets me know everybody's in.
Yeah, it looks like, uh, Nick and George have let in. I don't see anyone else in the waiting room.
Sounds good. Thank you. We are now back in open session, um, for a, I think we did the, uh, close, we have a, um, a motion for the, the closed session for one, for item A, correct? And item B?
Just item A.
Just item A, okay.
So, Madam Mayor, I guess I'll motion to accept administration's recommendation for collective bargaining agreements.
I support.
Motion and support, please call the roll. You want to do it, Mr. Albright?
I'd be happy to, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Lucito?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens?
Yes. And we, um, we're going to do a motion for adjournment tonight.
So move.
Support, motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
I'm sorry, I was right, I was writing down. Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Lucito?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone.
You guys have a good night. Happy Father's Day to all.
Night, night.
Night, everybody.